We have a few announcements from the town clerk's office. Dog licenses are due. Eleven dollars for an intact dog. Seven dollars for a muted male or spayed female. May fourteenth, two thousand twelve is the annual town election. That's a week from tonight. Absentee ballots are available until Friday, May fourth. That's this Friday. Unless you are hospitalized. If you're hospitalized, you can apply later. You can help. But they have, you can vote in office, in the town clerk's office, or you must return them by eight P.M. on Monday, May fourteenth, two thousand twelve, in order to count them with everybody else's. Every two years, elected and appointed officials must take the state ethics test online. Please bring a copy with you when you are sworn in. And so any town officials at all, if you're elected or appointed, you need to take the state ethics test. Students, make sure your college mail-to address is current. August seventeenth is the last date to register for the state primary. September sixth, two thousand twelve, seven to eight P.M., the state primary is a Thursday. Seven A.M. to eight P.M., yeah. October seventeenth is the last date to register for the state election. You know, that's that big one they have, hi mucky mucks. November sixth, two thousand twelve, seven A.M. to eight P.M. is the state election. We have the annual town meeting call to order, and we have, the warrant is in your annual town report book, and I will ask the town clerk to read the call to the meeting and the constable's return.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester S.S., to either of the constables of the town of Berlin and the county of Worcester. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town, qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs, to meet at the Berlin Memorial School in said Berlin on Monday, the seventh day of May two thousand twelve, next, at seven thirty o'clock in the evening. Then and there to act on the following articles or in relation thereto. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof as per vote of the town in said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof, fail not and make due return of this warrant. With your doings thereon, to the town clerk, at the time and place of meeting as aforesaid, given under our hands the seventeenth day of April in the year of our Lord, two thousand twelve. Board of Selectmen, Thomas Andrew Chairman, Valerie J. Bradley Vice Chairman, Judith Bowman Clerk. A true copy attests, Howard H. Spalding Constable. Worcester S.S. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Berlin by posting up attested copies thereof at the town hall, the town offices, and the post office eighteen days before the time of holding said meeting as within directed. Howard H. Spalding Constable, April nineteenth, two thousand twelve.
In your town report book, if you go to page eighty-six, you'll see some comments about the Berlin Town Meeting, how we conduct it, how we make motions and handle our business. And they may be helpful to you to understand what to do if you want to participate, and also what others are doing that aren't participating. The first comment about public safety. The main exits for this room with a large assembly are right out the side doors on either side of the building. We can empty it in less than a minute if everybody heads for those. It's very easy for everybody to be safe in case of an alarm. Assistive listening devices are available at check-in. If somebody is hard of hearing, having trouble hearing, you can pick one of those up. If you note that someone near you is having trouble in that way, suggest that fact to them. Beyond that, we will move on to the business. On the previous page, page eighty-five, we have bylaws that affect the conduct of town meeting, and some of the things that we do from time to time. If you're uncertain why, sometimes the answers are there. And there's various other information available in the book to you as we go on. At this time, I also want to introduce to you, the Finance Committee is on your left at the table down here. The three members present from your left to right are Ariam Mancuso, Bill Tomassino, and Scott Schultz. And the three selectmen are in front of me at the table in the center, from your left to right, Valerie Bradley, Thomas Andrew, and Judy Bowman. And all of these folks will probably be speaking a number of times tonight. Everyone else, when you rise to speak, even if I call on you by name, I would ask you, when you come to the microphone, to please give your name and your address in Berlin, just for the general information of everybody in case they don't know you. Helps us all to be better acquainted. Article one, to see if the town will vote to fill all vacancies and choose all necessary town offices, not required to be chosen by ballot, or take any action relative thereto. Val Bradley.
Articles one through seven. I move to approve the motions as printed under Articles one through seven of the warrant for this meeting, with the following amendment under Article five, change to as enacted under Article nine, to read as enacted under Article ten.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the motions as printed under Articles one through seven of the warrant for this meeting, with the following amendment under Article five, to change as enacted under Article nine, to read as enacted under Article ten. Want to speak to it, Val?
We usually group this all together because it's the same amount every year, and it makes the meeting go a little bit faster.
The Finance Committee has recommendations in favor of several of these articles. Is there any further comment from the Finance Committee? Does anyone else wish to speak on any of these motions or actions? Okay, one of these involves short-term borrowing, so I have to be able to record a two-thirds vote on it. I'll ask you to vote on the motion, which is to approve the written motions under Articles one through seven, with that one change under Article five, as enacted under Article nine, to as enacted under Article ten. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. If only the rest of it went that fast. Article eight, to hear and act on the reports of any outstanding committees or take any action relative thereto. Are there other committees or bodies of the town that wish to report that are not, did not, do not appear in the printed reports, the town report? Judy Bowman.
This is an abbreviated version of the Energy Committee Report.
You need to speak more directly into the mic.
This is an abbreviated version of the Energy Committee Report. Copies will be available online or at the town clerk's office if you want to read the entire thing. The Energy Committee was formed to reduce energy consumption and develop more sustainable energy practices in the town of Berlin. In the past year, we have had energy audits done on this building, the Municipal and Public Safety Building, the library, the eighteen-seventy Town Hall. We have also had lighting upgrades at the eighteen-seventy Town Hall, the library, and the town barn. We are currently applying for our Green Community Designation, and hope to have that done by the end of this month. We had American Recovery and Reinvestment Act money, the EECVG grant, which we upgraded the energy management system on the public safety wing of the municipal building, and we did some retro-commissioning work here at Berlin Memorial, and now have a clearer idea of how much money it's going to cost us to fix the HVAC system. We would also like to put a request out for anyone who has experience with HVAC system and has an interest in volunteering their time to come work with us on coming up with a plan on fixing the HVAC system. This building is the least energy-efficient building that we have. It is in the fortieth percentile of energy efficiency, so we have a lot of room to fix.
Are there any others that wish to report at this time?
For the Finance Committee, would just like to direct you to, if you have your town report, page seventy-six, this is a letter from the Finance Committee. If you haven't read that already, please do. It just goes over the, some of the details of the budget. One thing I'd like to point out, as it indicated before, the total budget increasing of three point nine percent, that is actually going to come down to about three point six percent. What has changed since we went to printing is that the Tohoto Capital Assessment is coming in lower than previously expected by thirty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. So that pretty much leaves that almost level from the previous fiscal year. So the overall budget will be increasing about three point six percent. Thanks.
Okay, that, those are the two reports that have been presented at this time. The, the Energy Committee Report will be placed online and available so people can read it, read the full report there. We will move on. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of money to be used toward the reduction of the tax rate.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article nine.
Motion is to pass over. You want to say anything about that, Bill?
This article was only added there in case we needed free cash to fund the operating budget. We do not, so therefore we're passing over it.
Anything else to be said on the motion? All those in favor of passing over Article nine say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or borrow or transfer from available funds or otherwise provide all necessary sums of money to defray the town's expenses for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand twelve, and to determine the salaries of the town offices for that period, or take any action relative thereto. We will be, under this article, voting the town budget. And we go back in the book to page eighty-one and perhaps others, as we start to work through the town budget. And I will call on the Finance Committee to begin this process. Mr. Tomassino.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars to cover items one through forty-nine in the Finance Committee's F.Y. two thousand thirteen budget.
Motion is made and seconded to raise and appropriate the sum of seven hundred ninety-eight dollars, it's seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars to cover items one through forty-nine in the Finance Committee's fiscal year two thousand thirteen budget. Do you wish to speak to that motion further?
You probably noticed this represents almost a hundred thousand dollar increase over last year's budget. And I'd just like to hit the highlights. There's a twenty-six thousand dollar increase in municipal building expenses and fuel oil charges. Ran fiscal, as you know, all the prices of any petroleum product are going way up, and the fuel oil is budgeted about sixteen thousand dollars higher. It's also a reevaluation year, so there's a ten thousand dollar increase there. Five thousand dollar increase for town council, and five thousand for tax entitles. The big increase is thirty-eight thousand in the reserve fund. The reason for that actually goes back into public safety. The highway superintendent is retiring this year, and he's due compensation for accrued vacation time and sick time. The original proposal was to put that under highway salary. The Finance Committee believed it did not belong there, and we put half of the salary in the reserve fund, based on the fact that we believe the position will not be filled July first. If it is, we have the money in the reserve fund. If it's not filled, that money won't be used, and will be turned back to the town at the end of the fiscal year.
Are there any other comments to be made on this motion? This includes all items on the, on the budget on page, as shown on page eighty-one in your Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is to raise and appropriate seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred fifty-four dollars to cover items one through forty-nine in the Finance Committee's fiscal year two thousand thirteen budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries the affirmative.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of one million, one hundred sixty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars to cover items fifty through seventy-three in the Finance Committee's F.Y. two thousand thirteen budget, and to appropriate from the inspector's offset receipts account the sum of one hundred and five thousand, five hundred dollars to the following line items. Item sixty-four Plumbing and Gas Inspector, wages part-time, thirty-one thousand. Item sixty-six Inspector of Wires, wages part-time, fifty thousand. And item sixty-seven Fire Inspector, wages part-time, twenty-four thousand, five hundred. And to appropriate from Rescue Squad Receipts, reserved for appropriation, the sum of eighty thousand dollars to the following line items. Item fifty-nine Rescue Squad Wages, part-time, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine. Item sixty Rescue Squad Incentive, seven thousand, four hundred and fourteen. And item sixty-one Rescue Squad Expenses, forty-three thousand, three hundred and seven dollars in the Finance Committee's F.Y. two thousand thirteen budget.
Scott, may I assume that the total of all of these is the one million, three hundred forty-eight thousand that's printed here?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is to raise and appropriate one million, one hundred sixty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars to cover items fifty through seventy-three in the Finance Committee's budget. And from the Inspector's Offset Receipts Account, a hundred five thousand dollars, a hundred five thousand, five hundred dollars to Plumbing and Gas Inspector Wages, thirty-one thousand. Inspector of Wires Wages, fifty thousand. Fire Inspector Wages, twenty-four thousand, five hundred. And from the Rescue Squad Receipts, reserved for appropriation, the sum of eighty thousand dollars to Rescue Squad Wages, part-time, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars, and Rescue Squad Incentives, seven thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. And item sixty-one Rescue Squad Expenses, forty-three thousand, three hundred and seven dollars. When you get all done, that recommended column there, and coming down to the total of the million, three hundred forty-eight thousand is what we're voting on right now. Are there any questions about any of these amounts of money, or about that, any of the line items that are included in your book under public safety? Anybody that wants to speak on any of this? If not, I'm going to ask you to vote. I'm not going to read the long motion again unless I'm requested to. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of two million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and ten dollars to cover items seventy-four and seventy-five in the Finance Committee's fiscal year two thousand thirteen budget.
Motion is made and seconded to raise and appropriate, raise and appropriate the sum of two million, six hundred sixty-four thousand, six hundred and ten dollars to cover items seventy-four and seventy-five in the Finance Committee's fiscal year two thousand thirteen budget. Do you want to comment out further? School committee want to make any comment? Anyone else want to speak on this motion? This is what pays for what goes on in this building every day. Hearing no one, I will ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries the affirmative.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars to cover items seventy-six to eighty-seven in the Finance Committee's F.Y. thirteen budget, and to appropriate from its Transfer Station Sticker and Recycling Offset Receipts Account, the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars to item eighty-five Transfer Station Expenses, and to appropriate seven thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars from General Cemetery Receipts, and one thousand dollars from sale of lots to item eighty-seven Cemetery Expenses, in the Finance Committee's F.Y. two thousand
The motion is to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-six dollars for items seventy-six to eighty-seven in the two thousand thirteen budget. And the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars from Transfer Station Sticker and Recycling Offset Receipts Account, and seven thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars from the General Cemetery Receipts, and one thousand dollars from the sale of lots to item eighty-seven Cemetery Expenses in this budget. Again, I'll just ask the clarifying comment, does that all come to the total of the six hundred fifty-three thousand, oh sixty-one that's printed there? Yes. Does anyone else want to speak on this motion? This is all the things about public works and facilities. If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We go to page eighty-three.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars to cover items eighty-eight through ninety-nine in the Finance Committee's F.Y. two thousand thirteen budget.
Motion is made and seconded to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars to cover items eighty-eight through ninety-nine in the two thousand thirteen budget. So anyone, do you wish to speak further on that? Does anyone else have a comment in regard to this? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Ariam.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and eighteen thousand, sixty-nine dollars to cover the items one hundred through one oh seven in the Finance Committee's fiscal year two thousand thirteen budget.
Motion is made and seconded to raise and appropriate one hundred eighteen thousand, sixty-nine dollars for items one hundred through one hundred and seven. Do any, does the Finance Committee want to say anything more? Anyone else want to comment on this? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Got an interest?
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, thirty-nine dollars, and to appropriate the sum of nine thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars from septic loan receipts available for appropriation to cover items one oh eight and one oh nine in the Finance Committee's F.Y. two thousand thirteen budget.
The motion is to raise and appropriate two hundred sixty-seven thousand, thirty-nine dollars, and to appropriate nine thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars from septic loan receipts available for appropriation to cover items one oh eight and one oh nine. Finance Committee have any further comment? Does anyone else wish to speak, speak to this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Intergovernmental Expenditures.
I move to amend item one thirteen to read four hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars, and to raise and appropriate the sum of two million, six hundred ninety-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars to cover items one twelve through one thirteen in the Finance Committee's F.Y. two thousand thirteen budget.
The motion is to amend line item one thirteen, the Tohoto Capital Assessment, to read four hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars, slight reduction, and to raise and appropriate the sum of two million, six hundred ninety-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars to cover items one hundred twelve to one hundred and thirteen in the Finance Committee's fiscal year two thousand thirteen budget. So this is all of the appropriations for Tohoto for the coming fiscal year. Does the Finance Committee wish to speak further?
Yeah, the amendment was basically what I mentioned before about the Tohoto Capital Assessment coming in thirty-three thousand or so less than originally when we went to printing on this. And then the other part of the Tohoto Assessment, you'll see, of course, the increase is over eight percent, but the reason our assessment has been increasing is over the last few fiscal years, the Berlin.
I want to declare a few minutes recess, and if people would still keep the noise down, please. Back to order. We have the motion for, under intergovernmental expenditures for Tohoto that we're continuing discussion on, and I'll ask Mr. Schultz to continue.
Yes, regarding the operating budget for Tohoto, the increase of eight point six-three percent, as mentioned, is because of. percent is mentioned is because of Berlin's share of the overall assessment has increased over the last few fiscal years because of increased enrollment from Berlin compared to Boylston. We've gone from around thirty-one point five percent about four or five fiscal years ago to nearly forty percent of the share with this fiscal year.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this motion? This is all the budget for Tohonto, both for the building project and for the regular budget for the coming fiscal year. What? Yeah, we'll get, we'll get to it. We haven't forgotten it. Okay, I'll ask you to vote on the Tohonto funds. This is to, we're changing one item one thirteen to read four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars, and we're raising and appropriating two million, six hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars to cover items one hundred and twelve through one hundred and thirteen in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2013 budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. We have another motion, I believe, under this.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred and sixty-five thousand, thirty dollars to cover item one-ten in the Finance Committee's FY-2013 budget.
Motion is made and seconded to raise and appropriate three hundred and sixty-five thousand, thirty dollars to cover item one-ten. This is Assabett. Anything to be said on this further? Lynn Ryan, a Berlin's representative on the Assabett Valley Regional School Committee.
Hi, guys, just to let you know, the overall budget.
You need to get a little closer to the mic, Lynn.
Just to let you know, the overall budget is up one point seven-three percent. Our assessment is up three point four-five percent. We have the same number of kids. It totals twelve thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars over last year. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Aaron.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and five dollars to cover items one fourteen to one nineteen in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2013 budget.
What about one-twenty? What about item one-twenty? Go back and check out what Mike showed you got all right. I'm going to reread that. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and five dollars to cover items one fourteen to one-twenty in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2013 budget. Motion is made and seconded to appropriate, raise and appropriate nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and five dollars to cover items one fourteen through one-twenty. Anything to be said on this further? Anybody else want to speak on this? This is all the insurance of all sorts and various other benefits for employees. If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. It may be a wreck of time on the budget. Okay. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise, to transfer a sum of money from the Anna Hunt Fund to the library account and various other monies to the library account. Bob McTague, of the Library Trustees.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of fifty dollars from the Anna Hunt Fund to the library account and to appropriate from the Library Dog Fund the sum of nineteen hundred and thirty-three dollars to the library account and to further authorize the acceptance of any other monies from various sources to the library account.
Motion is made and seconded to transfer fifty dollars from the Anna Hunt Fund and to appropriate from the Library Dog Fund the sum of one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and to further authorize the acceptance of any other monies from various sources to the library account. Finance Committee's comment. Finance Committee recommends. Is there anything else you want to say about it, Bob?
No.
Does anyone else have any questions or wish to comment on this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to accept a sum of money for perpetual care in the cemeteries and a sum of money for the cemetery follower fund. Margaret Bergen of the Cemetery Commission.
I move that the sum of four thousand dollars be accepted for perpetual care in the cemeteries.
Motion is made and seconded that the sum of four thousand dollars be accepted for perpetual care in the cemeteries. Anything, Finance Committee's comment on that?
Recommend.
Finance Committee recommends. Anything else to be said on this motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. The moderator would like to simply state that Mrs. Bergen is now retiring after, I believe it's twenty-four years as a cemetery commissioner. We greatly thank her for her service. Article thirteen, to see if the town will approve the sixty-two million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight borrowing authorized by the Assabett Valley Regional Vocational School District. And I will let them read the long motion. Lynn Ryan of the Assabett Valley Regional School Committee. Why don't you just take it and hold it so you can, it won't work that way. That's fine.
I move to appropriate the sum of sixty-two million, four hundred and thirty-four dollars, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars borrowing authorized by the Assabett Valley Regional Vocational School District for the purpose of paying costs of the Assabett Valley Regional Technical High School repair renovation project located at two fifteen Fitchburg Street, Marlborough, Mass., including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren of at least fifty years and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, set amount to be expended at the direction of the Assabett Valley Regional Technical High School Building Committee, that the town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by MSBA, and any project cost the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities, provided further that any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of fifty-three, fifty-three and forty-eight one-hundredths percent of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA or the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, and that the amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. Wow.
At the beginning of your motion, you moved to, moved that the town, what's the next word? Moved that the town.
Where are you?
All right, at the beginning of the motion, please read the first line of your motion.
I move to approve the sixty-two million.
Thank you very much. The motion is essentially in the language of the article. There are a few minor additions to trail the sentences together. The key change that is there is at the end and that the amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. You may speak to the motion.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Val Bradley for serving with me on the School Building Committee over at Assabett. And we have with us tonight, for those of you who haven't had the chance to meet him, Pat Collins, who is Assistant Superintendent and Business Office Manager at Assabett Valley, to give a small presentation. It's a seven-minute presentation. He's promised to take five minutes. So, so if you have any questions, if you'd hold them until the end and then we'll try to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much, Lynn. And thank you for allowing me some time to talk to you this evening about our project. As I get into this, you'll understand that we have to do this same presentation to all seven member communities, and the superintendent of Assabett is doing the same presentation, asking the voters of the town of Hudson, who's also holding their town meeting, to approve the same borrowing. So why don't I get right into it and let you know some of the facts and figures, and there is a handout, and I hope this doesn't do this to me through this presentation. There is a paper handout in the back that has all the same information. In essence, the Assabett School Committee decided to solicit the Mass School Building Authority back in two thousand and eight for grant funds to renovate our Assabett Valley High School. We thought that that was the most fiscally responsible way to do this project. They are the authority, as you probably know, through other projects that will share in the cost of public school construction and repair projects. We've been doing a lot of communication during these past three, three and a half years with the various towns and the boards, meeting throughout the years and keeping them updated, and we've provided handout materials at previous town meetings as well to let you know. We've even done cable TV shows, and that's why I'm keeping my day job. Okay, Assabett was built in nineteen seventy-three, and the school has only had one major capital improvement since that time. It was a replacement roof in nineteen eighty-six, and all of the other building systems are original equipment and at the end of their useful life. We have an enormous facility over there. It's a great facility. It's about three hundred and sixty-eight thousand square feet, of course, due to all of the various shop spaces that we have, and we have an enrollment of approximately eleven hundred students this year. We also have, probably a number of you have participated in our adult evening program, and over the last three years, we've had ten thousand people from all of our seven-member towns participate in one of our Assabett After Dark programs. So the facility is not just a daytime use facility. It is used up through eleven o'clock each evening, and of course, with all the other sports and athletics on the weekends as well. All of this process, it's very regulated, it's very time-consuming, but we, we got great news last fall on November sixteenth. We drove into Boston, and the Board of Directors at the Mass School Building Authority voted unanimously to support our Assabett project and fund up to, or grant up to, thirty-three million dollars, thirty-three point one million dollars to repair that school, which is the fifty-three point four-eight percent. That, that money that they have committed is contingent upon the approval of all seven-member towns this springtime by no later than June thirtieth. So we need all seven-member towns to approve this. The project scope is very straightforward. The plan is, is to replace the roof, all the windows and exterior doors, the heating and ventilation system, all of the life safety systems, alarms, heat and smoke detectors. We also plan to make, we have to make the facility ADA compliant, and then also modernize our science classrooms as well. I'm going to go through a couple of pictures here that kind of tell the story that I just talked about in words, and hopefully bring some more meaning to it. This picture is an aerial shot, of course, of the facility, and it was constructed in various sections, as you can see, and it's three hundred, about three hundred and sixty-eight thousand square feet. Here's a picture on the left of the roof, and you can see how it's cracking and peeling away. I joke that we can tell when it's raining outside by being on the indoors because of the number of leaks that we've had to repair in recent years. And then our door hardware for many of our windows is irreplaceable, can't get parts anymore, and so we've resorted to just bolting them shut. Here's a picture of a rooftop unit on the left. This one actually happens to be completely dead right now. Picture on the right, exterior doors, you can see in the middle there, some of the gaps where the cold air gets in in the wintertime. On the left, this picture of the door, all the door handles need to be replaced and other modifications to the lavatories for handicap accessibility. On the left is our emergency generator. Of course, it doesn't really power much, and a modern emergency generator will power much more of the facility and backup systems in, in the event of a power loss. And then on the right, you can see our classrooms, it's one of our science classrooms, and the MSBA has invested a lot of time and energy making sure our state science classrooms are top-notch whenever they invest their money. We are a high-tech state. We're in the middle of a biotech area, and they want to make sure that we're training students in appropriate facilities in our public schools to enter the workforce upon graduation. Again, the pool stations and the sprinkler system, I'll just make note that when the building was constructed, the sprinkler system was only installed in the shop areas, the areas of the highest hazard, and our classrooms don't have sprinklers. Of course, modern building codes require that, so we'll have to extend the sprinkler system throughout the entire facility. Some of the numbers, you can see the project budget, as was mentioned, sixty-two point four million, the fifty-three point four-eight reimbursement rate, and the MSBA share up to thirty-three point one million. So this is where it gets down to kind of the brass tacks on the numbers. The remaining balance, the twenty-nine point three million dollars is what gets shared amongst the seven-member communities. And so the logical question is, how does that get shared? And it's based upon the last three years enrollment average. And you can see there, Berlin at the top, the three-year average on the far right, three point six-five percent, three point six-five percent is Berlin's share of that remaining twenty-nine million dollars. And then you can see how the other towns' enrollment averages played out as well. Marlborough, by the way, of course, is the largest at forty-nine percent. That, that percentage, by the way, of the debt service remains the same into the future. It doesn't change. It gets locked in at that three point six-five, and that's what gets paid over the life of the bond. So what does that mean in terms of the next five years? Of course, we're going to borrow for thirty, but just kind of a five-year outlook, a lot of the Finance Committees do capital planning, one and of the finance committees do capital planning, want to know what's on the horizon. Well, on the horizon, for Berlin, for fiscal thirteen is zero dollars. We don't need any money for this project for the upcoming fiscal year. For fiscal fourteen, it's one thousand three hundred and sixty-nine, that's the estimate. And then, at the peak of this, kind of more importantly, going to the right, when we permanently finance this project, the peak, or the highest debt service, is gonna be about eighty-seven thousand dollars for Berlin. And then you can see other towns there as well. So what does that do in terms of the average tax bill? This was with the assistance of our financial advisor. For fiscal thirteen, there's no impact. For fiscal fourteen, it's less than a dollar. And then you can read those, I won't read them all to you, but at the peak, it's gonna be about sixty dollars for the average single-family home for the town of Berlin, and then declining One of the questions we anticipated and get a lot is, geez, sixty-two million dollars seems like a lot of money. It is. And so, how do you compare that with other like projects? So we have a list here of other MSBA-funded projects, with Shawshin Regional Voc Tech at the top, Southeastern Regional at the bottom. These were other repair projects, and then at the far right is the comparative cost per square foot. So at the top was three and thirty-seven dollars for Shawshin, and at the bottom was a hundred and eleven dollars for Southeastern. So, our project is about a hundred and seventy dollars per square foot, which really falls into that realm of reasonability. Another question that we got was, well, why don't you just build new? And the quick response to that is, is we can't. The Mass School Building Authority will not fund a new Assabette High School. They believe, and as we do, that the facility and the structure can support another fifty years, and we just need to do infrastructure work, and that's the less costly approach. New construction, by the way, on the far right again, you can see these are other high school projects, cost-per-square-foot basis, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars down to three hundred and forty-one. So, new construction is costing twice that of our repair project on a square-foot basis. So, just to recap, all of the work, the scope of work that I mentioned, is necessary work. It simply has to get done. It will certainly make the facility more energy-efficient, and it's definitely an ideal time to borrow money and go out to bid for construction as well, for sure. So what's the status? West Borough, South Borough, and North Borough Town Meetings have all approved at those dates that you can see there. And we got very good news last week with the Marlboro City Council. Their finance subcommittee unanimously voted to support this, and they're gonna bring it to the full city council in a couple of weeks, and we're optimistic there as well. So that's the status of the project right now, and with that, I guess I would simply ask for your support for this project. Thank you.
I'm gonna call on the Finance Committee for comment. We have a positive recommendation already printed, but Scott?
Yes, the Finance Committee believes that for funding this, that we'll be able to do it in combinations of just the standard levy, combination of stabilization, and hopefully in the future, when mitigation funds start coming in from the developments in town. As you know, the first three years of the projections for what our assessment would be would be very manageable, it wasn't until FY seventeen where they kick in at eighty-seven thousand would be our assessment or estimated at this time. So that's, at the time, we would be looking whether we have to use a combination of stabilization, or hopefully at that time, mitigation funds are coming in. Thanks.
Are there others that wish to speak on this motion? The motion is lengthy, and I make the note at the beginning that this is a motion to approve the borrowing authorized by the Assabette Valley Regional Vocational School District. This is a, this money, this has already been voted by the committee, and all the communities now have to approve that borrowing. This is a procedure which is very similar to what we followed in regard of building the new Tohoto a couple of years ago. Therefore, we have need only of a simple majority vote to approve. Is there anybody that wishes me to read the lengthy motion again? Hearing none, I will ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously.
I just wanted to say thank you very much, I appreciate that.
And so do I, but I'm not touching the mic.
Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate and/or borrow or transfer from available funds the sum of three thousand dollars for the preparation of the master plan for the town of Berlin, or take any action relative thereto. Motion under Article fourteen. Ron Verbruska of the Planning Board.
I move to transfer the sum of three thousand dollars from free cash for the preparation of the master plan for the town of Berlin to be expended by the Planning Board.
Finance Committee moves to transfer the sum of three thousand dollars from free cash for this purpose. You want to speak to it further? Ron?
Yes, I do. Part of an ongoing effort on master planning. Already completed open-space plan, already completed planned production housing plan. We will use this money for land use, plan to complement our build-out analysis that we completed last year. This will be an annual request as an ongoing planning, master plan.
The Finance Committee has a positive recommendation. Is there anything you wanted to say further? Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. It's three thousand dollars to be taken from free cash for preparation of the master plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article fifteen, Mr. Andrew.
Mr. Moderator, may I request that we take up action under Article thirty-three at this point, due to one of the key presenters having to leave early for personal reasons.
Motion's made and seconded to take this up, Article thirty-three up out of order, due to a personal need among the proponents to leave early. Is there any comment about this further? If we vote this now, we will take up Article thirty-three at this time, out of order, and take care of that business before we go on to Article fifteen. Hearing no comment, all those in favor taking up Article thirty-three now, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thomas?
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase eminent domain gift or otherwise for municipal purposes to including, sorry, for municipal purposes including the construction of a new town barn, salt shed, sand shed, and a vehicle washing station, all or a portion of a parcel of land comprised of approximately nine acres abiding West Street Route sixty-two, approximately one point two-five miles west of Berlin Center, and identified on the assessor's map fourteen point two as parcel sixteen, together with any structures and improvements thereon, on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen may determine, and further to transfer the sum of two hundred thousand dollars from free cash to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for the acquisition
The motion's made and seconded to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase eminent domain gift or otherwise for municipal purposes including the construction of a new town barn, salt shed, sand shed, and a vehicle washing station, all or a portion of a parcel of land comprised of approximately nine acres abiding West Street Route sixty-two, approximately one point twenty-five miles west of the, of Berlin Center, and identified on the assessor's map fourteen point two as parcel sixteen, together with any structures and improvements thereon, on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen may determine, and further to transfer the sum of two hundred thousand dollars from free cash to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for the acquisition and matters related thereto. Thomas?
Yes, this, the town has been considering the idea of how to accommodate the highway facility. Right now, the town barn on Carter Street is really quite deficient to the purpose, and we have equipment, you know, all over the place, and very difficult to store and service. Looking at the, some of the available parcels, at least theoretically available, there was South Common, that appeared unattractive to us for two reasons. One, the height of the water table would require extensive expenditure for site preparation, and the use of a part of the parcel for the sort of heavy use of the highway department seemed incompatible with the educational and recreational uses that are currently being conducted here. The other possibility was the transfer station site. That site also has significant site preparation costs. The water table is very high, and a portion of that is the old dump, which greatly complicates, obviously, the idea of using that for building and so on. Given that the problems with those two sites, we received an offer, I think people will speak to this in more detail, we received a, you know, a very favorable offer from a longtime resident for this parcel, so that the acquisition cost actually compares favorably to the site preparation costs at the other sites, and I'll leave it to others to speak about it more fully.
Finance Committee has a positive recommendation. Does the Finance Committee wish to comment further? Calling Dennis Bartlett to speak further about this.
Dennis Bartlett, one fifteen Linden Street. This is basically the plan, a conceptual plan of what we would like to put on the property on West Street. We had a committee of four. We went over all the sites that Tom had said, and we came up with this particular parcel. We contacted the owner, and she was willing to sell it to us for the two hundred thousand dollars. It's pretty much flat, so it's a really nice piece of property for what we want to do.
Any questions?
Questions? Yes, please come to the mic to speak.
Good evening, David Burke, sixteen Coburn Road. Dennis, nice to see you. I agree that we may need a new facility, but I'm wondering about the following concerns with the proposed plan. One being the sightlines on Route sixty-two and the traffic concerns that might generate traffic, the need for new traffic signal, and I'm also concerned about the impact that that acquisition may have on nearby conservation lands and the hunting privileges that many of us enjoy on those properties. And, and I haven't had a lot of time to analyze the site location. I'm wondering if there was a feasibility study done whatsoever to contemplate more than two additional sites for this. And again, with just the short time that I've had to analyze it, I do support the need for the new facility, but I'm wondering if better location might be more centralized around the police station and fire station, and more what we call the downtown area. And with that, once again, I appreciate your concerns and the town's needs, but those are my immediate concerns as well. Thank you.
Mr. Bartlett?
The site vision layout was done by Ross Associates. It comes into specs with the speed limit and site vision. They moved the driveway...
Stay close to the mic, please.
A little further, so it would give you a better sight view. It falls under all the state characteristics, and it meets them all, so as far as hunting that wooded area there is gonna be all DPW area. And as far as moving it down to twenty-three Linden Street, I believe is where you were talking, better than half of the green area is in a sewer system on the Linden Street property. They hit them all.
Would you reach back? I don't hear the mic.
What? If you want to say anything more, you gotta come to the mic, because I can't hear you either. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Dennis. I understand that the, you know, if the acquisition were to go through, the area would certainly be off-limits to hunting, but what many of us are concerned about is the five-hundred-foot no-load zone that goes around such an area, where you cannot, you know, my concern, along with the traffic and some of the other ones that many of us share, is that that area, which people from all over this part of the district share as a bird-hunting area that is stocked by the state, would probably be shut down as a result of the new facility, just given the setbacks and the intrusion to the area, frankly.
I don't believe it's gonna impact that, as far as bird hunting in that area. This is, this piece is down further to what I would call a plaster's property.
Yeah.
And it's up higher than the hunting area on West Street also. It's probably twenty, twenty-five feet higher than that area. I can't foresee it affecting the bird hunting.
I appreciate that, and it probably hasn't been researched that much, but again, once a facility like that and buildings and roadways go into place and become official, there's a five-hundred-foot setback from all of that nine acres that would, you know, definitely affect the fields that are owned by the state and stocked by the state and have been for decades, affording excellent bird hunting in the area. And, and once again, I don't want to, I think there's a need for the building, I'd like that issue to be thought out, as well as what it will do to the overall traffic patterns on sixty-two. And if there's somewhere better for this facility, I wonder if that could be researched a little more than just citing two locations and, you know, maybe get a professional involved or so, and look into a feasibility study that might be more, find a site that might be more accommodating for the structure and more centralized.
I think, I think your point's taken. I think that the point is that has, that particular issue has not been studied at this point.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm hoping Thomas got some more to add to this, too. I'm hoping Tom has got some more to add to this, too. This wasn't just two sites. We looked at a number of sites throughout town, and this was what came to be the best.
I'll call on Tom Sanford to reflect, who's another member of this committee, to reflect further on sites considered.
As Dennis echoed there...
Closer to the mic, please.
As Dennis echoed, there are, there were several sites that we considered, not just two. Two is what Thomas highlighted, but there were several throughout town. And what we looked at was the proximity of butters that would be affected, as well as the development costs of the piece of property. And this one was the best suited for that. The geographical location to the existing highway department also figured in. It's not, probably no more than three-quarters of a mile away. Now, one of the things that you had brought up was the hunting. What we should consider is, is the alternative to developing this would be residential house lots. And if residential house lots go in, then I would assume that would preclude the hunting as well.
Interesting point, and again, I think, I haven't had a lot of time to study this, perhaps a few days. I think it kind of crept up on a few people, with all due respect. I'm sure you've had, you know, done your due diligence, et cetera, but for the price of two hundred thousand dollars and nine acres that are centrally located within what is effectively now a conservation designated area that is particularly special due to the fact that it is stocked by the state with game birds, and that many of us work our dogs and skills out there and have enjoyed it for many, many years. And I guess my concern is that that might be jeopardized, and that it might probably spell the end of that opportunity, which has been a very attractive, a very attractive slice of life in a town that many of us enjoy. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you, Dennis.
Okay. Mr. Foster? Hi, Dave. I've got, I have another speaker behind you here.
Yes, sir. Larry Foster, Randall Road, Berlin, Mass. Does the Highway Department plan to extract gravel on this area?
No, we do not.
Mr. Andrew?
I had neglected to remark before, and I think it's an important point, that this municipal use is subject to site plan review under the Berlin zoning bylaw. So it means that before anything can be done, a detailed plan has to be submitted to the ZBA, which allows butters and the town in general, and anyone else who has an interest in the project or the locality, to comment and to consider, and to have their concerns reflected in an ultimate plan on the same basis as if this were a non-municipal development.
Thank you. Mrs. Sukatinsky?
Jenny Sukatinsky, West Street. I live, I believe, within a half-mile of the location that the new proposed highway barn will be located, and I have great concerns about traffic. Myself, when I go to leave my driveway, I sit for a great deal of time to be either a right or a left. And I know the cluster box where I get my mail is located where the highway barn is right now. And any time of the day, I'm in the way to get my mail from the traffic, the in and the out of our highway trucks. So that's a great concern. I would very much like to leave that property untouched. I, myself, take dogs and enjoy the wildlife. I don't hunt, but it's so beautiful there, and I do wish we could leave it untouched. I would like Conservation to buy it at this time. However, I do realize and agree, there is a great need, but I would like the town and the committee to spend more time researching and possibly find another location. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Philip James Costa, Jr. I live at one seventeen West Street. My concern, like others who have spoken before me, if the Highway Department wants to build a new building somewhere, that's fine. I live at one seventeen Street, which is right across the street from where the proposed building might go. And there is traffic every morning. My fiancee, who owns the house, who's grown up in that house for over forty years, has said there has been traffic all her life there. So if I, I just would like to ask one question. Why weren't any of the neighbors who live at one seventeen West Street, on West Street, notified about any of the proposals of building anything across the street? Because we were not notified, and other people who live on West Street were not notified of this. And also, you know, like other people have said also, you know, we walk our dogs across the street. Dave had mentioned hunters go over there at a certain time of the year. It's very peaceful and quiet there. By adding all these trucks going in and out all day long, not talking about, you know, just going in and out, but I'm thinking back, I want to go backwards a little bit, two hundred thousand dollars for the property, where does the other four million dollars come from to build everything there?
That's not addressed in this article. This is only the acquisition of the property.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so I think it should be left the way it is, because it's just going to cause more chaos, more traffic, more accidents. I've had two accidents on our property in less than two years, where both accidents, two individuals came nearly to being killed. And that's because of the speed limit, and the Police Department does a great job on that route, as it is. But I just think, if they want to build, why not build somewhere else? A couple of different locations you've looked at, if you look at the town of Weston, they have their Fight Department, Police Department, and Highway Department all at one. A lot of other towns do that as well. I just think that there are different properties in this town, instead of spending two hundred thousand dollars that the town owns, that you could build a garage on. Thank you.
As far as the traffic is concerned, we enter and exit sixty-two every time we leave the barn, because we come out rated Carter Street and sixty-two. This property became available, was finally in writing no more than six weeks ago. We got this plan last week. This is just to buy the property. It's not saying we're going to put anything on it for I don't know how long. It's just a piece of property that would suit the town very nice.
Gretchen Stoddard, also from Randall Road.
A little closer to the mic, please.
Gretchen Stoddard from Randall Road. My question has to do with the ecology of the area. I'm very familiar with that area as a rider, and I know that there is a great deal of wetland, as well as the, I believe, the aqueduct area. There's also, I believe, a kettle hole right there in the area that you're speaking of. I think that's what it is, and a lovely, lovely stream that you have to cross with the horses. So I would like to know, before decision is made, what kind of study has been done about the ecology? And if you're washing trucks, how is that going to affect the water tables, et cetera?
Mr. Andrew?
I would reiterate what I said a few moments ago. We have a very strong local bylaw with regard to the control of municipal activities. Many local zoning bylaws do not provide for an even open site plan review before the Zoning Board of Appeals. And the site plan review is the time at which the details of the kind that you're talking about get to be addressed. And that will have to happen in order for anything to be built on this property. As far as kettle holes, as far as wetlands, as far as streams, there is nothing that exempts this municipal activity from setbacks of a hundred feet and from the oversight by the Conservation Commission to assure that any activities do not interfere with the wetlands on the property. In addition to that, because the site plan review process is very broad and goes beyond the mere protection of the wetland, it also does afford the possibility for people to raise particular concerns that don't involve strictly the wetland, and have those reflected, and have the plan adjusted in ways that create a decent balance between the municipal use and the protection of the parcel, in terms of ecology.
Ray Ellis?
Ray Ellis, Randall Road. I have a question of Mr. Bartlett. Does this site require a blinker or a stoplight at the entrance to West Street?
Not right now, according to Ross Associates. They take the speed limit, and they go back for sight vision on either side of the driveway. It needs all those criterias.
Peter?
Peter Hoffman, Randall Road. So if we pass this, this article, and conservation or site plan review blocks it from being considered as a viable parcel, are we stuck with a parcel that the town doesn't need? I'm not suggesting one or the other, but if that happens, I guess that's conceivable, the site plan blocks it, or the Plan Board blocks it, or Conservation blocks it, or any other entity blocks it. What will come of the parcel in that case? Thank you.
Mr. Andrew?
First of all, the municipal use is a use of right. It does not require a special permit, and so the ZBA cannot quote-unquote "block" this use. The site plan simply establishes the conditions under which the use can be built. We have, part of the analysis of the property was that there was sufficient land outside of wetlands and outside of the protected buffer zone to accommodate a number of possible configurations of the proposed use. So therefore, it's extremely unlikely that it would be blocked by Conservation. If there were no other use for it, I suppose at some point in the future, it might be purchased by the, by a conservation fund, by some other vote, if in fact, we found that there was really no use, which we don't believe to be the case, or we wouldn't have this article on the town meeting floor.
Bill Anderson?
Bill Anderson, Kitchell Road. So there's just, there's no covenants in the bill of sale that prohibits the town from just selling it outright to a third party down the road? Nope. Okay.
Tim Wheeler?
Tim Wheeler, two forty, Ploton Street. I find this article very easy to support, because ultimately, the decision as to what's going to be done with the parcel is up to you, and that's going to come at another time. So if indeed you don't want to see a municipal use to happen on that parcel in terms of a building, you just don't vote to expend the money at some future time. But to pass up the opportunity to acquire the land and control it at this point, when it is so close to the center of town, nine acres, I think is foolhardy for the town to pass it up. Two hundred thousand dollars is not as much as I think the land is easily worth. So I encourage you all to vote it and deal with this issue of what to build on it at some future time. Thank you.
Pat Curran, eighty-four West Street.
Pull the mic just down, so you'll, it'll get you better. There you go.
Pat Curran, eighty-four West Street. This may have been answered, I'm not sure, but how is this piece of land currently zoned? I believe it's zoned residential agricultural. And so would a zoning change be necessary? I presume it would. Did you just answer that by saying?
I did, but we don't mind answering any of them.
I just wasn't clear.
The municipal use is allowable in each of the zoning districts.
Uh huh. Mm-hmm. Okay. Then I would just like to point out that it's, although it's Route sixty-two, it's quite narrow. It's heavily trafficked, you know, Clinton and, you know, we all make a lot of use of it. And to have an entrance of municipal vehicles, as well as I see school buses pictured here, stopping traffic, I know firsthand, traffic backs up very quickly when there's someone stopped. On inclement weather, the land at this part of West Street, Route sixty-two, goes up and down. And in, on a slippery road, whenever vehicles have to slow down, they get stuck. Everything stops. Police have to come. This is not an uncommon occurrence. This happens whenever there is a slippery road in this part of the road. So having an entrance right on Route sixty-two at this site, I think, would be a bad idea. But as someone just pointed out, that's not in question at this point, I think. That would be part of the plan, but you might want to consider that.
Mr. Wheeler, what you said was, sounded very nice, but you don't live on West Street, so you don't see what we see. Another thing I wanted to point out is the traffic, when there are trucks coming up and down the street on West Street, my house shakes. My house literally shakes. So now you're going to have these heavy front-end loaders, dump trucks, constantly coming out and going up and down on Route sixty-two with the rest of the traffic. And like that woman just pointed out, when it snows out, or when it's slippery out, the traffic goes down to twenty miles to fifteen miles per hour, and I've seen more than enough accidents in front of my house. So, and I just think there are plenty of other places in this town, and to save two hundred thousand dollars to build somewhere else, you know, some of you people might think it's fine, but you don't live there. You don't see what happens there. You're not, you know, stuck in traffic. So for this proposal to go through, there's going to be traffic in the morning, and then there's going to be traffic at the end of the day when people are coming home. And not to, don't forget... And not to, don't forget, there are people who live in Clinton that come through our town to get onto 495. So there's going to be a lot more traffic than there is already. And with a red light put in there, I just think, it's, it just, I'm not saying that you shouldn't build a new garage, I just think it's totally wrong to build where you're going to build. If you don't live there, you don't know what it's like.
And the last three or four years with all the trucks have to enter onto West Street from Linden Street. I believe there was one minor accident in the last four years there due to the trucks coming onto the road.
The comment I wanted to make was, is the depiction of the school buses on this is just a possible place for them to park. It's not cast in stone or anything else. It's just a placeholder for some potential uses on that particular site.
Mary McKelk, 119 Carter Street, which actually our house sits on West Street. We are actually the virtual neighbors of the DPW now. So they're actually a very friendly neighbor. The traffic that everybody's talking about is not really that heavy. I, I mean, at 7:30 in the morning, when I'm leaving for work, I'm passing Denny's guys, and they give me a hi and a hello, and they let me go ahead of them. I really don't see that much heavy traffic coming from the barn. I have to be perfectly honest with all of you. And it's only three-quarters down a mile from where it exists today, coming onto West Street. Just a consideration, and I have to give Tim Wheeler a nod because I agree with you.
Janet.
Hi, Janet Campbell, Highland Street. You know, when you think about it now, the trucks are coming on.
A little closer to the mic.
Oh, you always say that. He just likes to direct people. Actually, where the trucks come out of Carter Street, in front of St. Joseph's and at the Gulf Station, is a much more dangerous place where the trucks are entering now and down at the corner. So I think this actually has a better sightline than where they come out now. And we're not talking about trucks coming out now, we're talking about getting a piece of property.
I also wanted to point out that we have four heavy trucks. Two one tons and two loaders. So that even if we lined everybody up and drove them out at the same time, it wouldn't be much of a parade.
Sorry, Marsha Johnston, Baker Road. I just had, I wanted to have an explanation, I guess, because the way the article was read, it says we want to spend $200,000 and also construct a town barn. So I just wanted to, wondered why that was sort of thrown in there after. And the other question was, is would the salt shed be moved from where it exists now on South Commons?
I'll do Pat and Tom will do the other part. The salt shed at South Street, or South Commons, would be torn down and there would be new ones erected on this site. The shed on South Commons is about at the last of its lifespan. It was built in the early 70s.
I'm not 100% sure I understood the other part of the question, but I'll try to answer it, and if I didn't, please correct me. The article is to expend $200,000 for the purchase of the land. That is money that we, is required to spend on the purchase of the land. There's no money in there to build the salt shed or the barns or anything like that. It would require another vote to do that. We put the indication of a municipal use, including the highway barn, because we wanted to be transparent and because we thought that if we came before you this evening and asked for $200,000 to purchase a piece of land, some of you might wonder what we wanted to do with it. So that's, so, you know, obviously, we, we're trying to be transparent. It's $200,000, the motion is to acquire the land. The currently considered use is the highway department. As has been said here, under the article, you could decide never to vote to build the highway department. You could decide to put another municipal use, you know, so, hm? There you go, whatever. But none of that, none of that is on the table tonight. It's to acquire the parcel of land at what is a favorable price offered by a long-term resident because it was the town that was purchasing it for municipal purposes.
If it were to be used for a different purpose, it would have to come back to a town meeting.
Yes, I mean, if it were to be used for this purpose, it would have to go back to a town meeting because you have to vote money to do something with it, whatever that may be.
Jenny Zukatinsky, West Street. I also have concerned, am concerned, the article read that it was to be purchased for municipal use, which that use was a highway barn and the washing and all the other things. I actually lived closer to the highway barn than Mary McKelk did. I lived next to the Gulf, I believe for around 10 years. And when there is ice and snow, our highway department is out all night. And if you are close to that, you hear trucks all night long. And I believe there is someone here tonight that will have to experience that. And you, you just don't ever get used to it. The trucks, they have to keep our roads, thank you, in great shape, sanded and plowed. I guess that's, that's all I, I have to say. Again, I, I did believe it was for a municipal, the purchase was for a municipal building.
This is your third shot, so make it really brief, please.
Okay, excuse me, Philip James Costa, 117 West Street. Into the mic, into the mic. Okay. So we just heard that the old barn is going to be turned, torn down. And they're going to put a salt shed up there too, correct? So therefore, there'll be more traffic than just the municipal trucks going in and out of there, because everybody in the town of Berlin has to go to get their salt where the salt shed will be. So therefore, everyone that's in this room that goes and gets salt will be coming up West Street and taking a right or a left to go in to get salt. Is that correct? I. It's not there yet, but that's where they want to build salt. We don't give away the salt, you can have sand, two five-gallon buckets of it.
Buzz Harris, Village Lane, move to call the question.
Motion made and seconded to call the question. That means we, is, and that means we're going to vote to cut off debate. It requires a two-thirds vote because it takes away people's right to speak. I will ask you to, I'm going to try this by voice vote, just to see if it'll work that way. The motion is to stop talking now and proceed to this vote. All those in favor of ceasing debate, say aye.
Aye.
All those who wish to continue debate, please say no.
No.
The, the debate is ended. That was a two-thirds vote. The motion is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase eminent domain, gift or otherwise, for municipal purposes, including the construction of a new town barn, salt shed, sand shed, and a vehicle washing station. All or a portion of a parcel of land comprised of approximately nine acres abiding West Street Route 62, approximately 1.25 miles west of Berlin Center, and identified on the assessor's map 14.2 as parcel 16, together with any structures or improvements thereon, on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen may determine, and further to transfer the sum of $200,000 from free cash to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for the acquisition and matters related thereto. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Can I see the noes and hands up, please, just quickly? Hands down, all those in favor. I declare that a two-thirds vote in favor. Okay, now we go back to Article 15. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the apportionment of Chapter 90 transportation bond issued money. Mr. Bartlett.
I move to appropriate the apportionment of Chapter 90 transportation bond issued money in the amount of $194,353.
Motion is made and seconded to appropriate the apportionment of Chapter 90 transportation bond, bond issued monies in the amount of $194,353. Mr. Bartlett.
This is our Chapter 90 money that's reimbursed to us through the state to do hot top work. I'm hoping to see us do Pleasant Street this year.
Finance Committee has a positive comment. You wish to speak further? The Finance Committee recommends, is there anything else to be said on this motion? Marsha.
Danny, I just wanted to clarify, you said Pleasant Street, correct? And would that be before the Bicentennial or after?
Anything else to be said? None, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of $70,000 for the purchase of hot top or take any action relative thereto. Mr. Bartlett.
I move to transfer the sum of $70,000 from free cash for the purchase of hot top. Said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion made and seconded to transfer $70,000 from free cash for this purpose. Do you want to speak about that, Dennis?
This year, it'll be used in conjunction with the Chapter 90 money, hoping we can go from the joint by the Pleasant Street Cemetery all the way up to the intersection
Finance Committee has a positive recommendation. Anything further? Anyone else want to speak on the motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 17, raise and appropriate, borrow, transfer from available funds $60,000 for purchase of a one-ton service truck with plow. Mr. Bartlett.
I move to transfer the sum of $60,000 from free cash for the purchase of a one-ton service truck with plow to replace the 2004 Ford service truck with plow. Said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion made and seconded, $60,000 from free cash. Want to speak to it, Dennis?
This will replace the one-ton truck, the service body and the plow we presently have. These are transmission and tires. We were trying to replace it a couple of years ago, but it was still running good at that time, and we've put it off till now.
Finance Committee has a positive recommendation. Do you wish to speak anything further? Anyone else want to speak to it? If not, the motion is $60,000 from free cash for the purchase of a one-ton service truck with plow to replace the 2004 Ford service truck with plow. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries the affirmative. Article 18, $15,000 for chest compression system. Mr. Bartlett of the Rescue Squad.
I move to transfer the sum of $15,000 from free cash for the purchase of a chest compression system, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion made and seconded for $15,000 from free cash for this purpose. Mr. Bartlett, you want to speak to it?
The trade name for this is the Thumper. It's an automatic chest compression machine, which, anyone in the room, if you are 100 pounds to 300 pounds, this will go on you. It does your compressions correctly every time without stopping, where humans get very tired after a few minutes of this. It also allows you to be coming downstairs with this machine working, so your rhythm is not interrupted. A lot of the bigger cities and towns are going to this because of the stairs, and they find it saving more lives.
Finance Committee has a positive recommendation. Do you have anything else to be said? Does anyone else wish to speak on this motion? Just not tell.
Peter Hoffman, Randall Road. So I'm in a different variety of first responder business as a volunteer and somewhat familiar with this. I, I'm embarrassed to say I'm not familiar with this device, but in the, in the, in what I do, it wouldn't be appropriate. But it seems like an incredibly large expenditure where CPR, which is what this is part of, is done manually, as Denny said, you know, it's, I suppose, perhaps longer. And I don't know to what extent we get reimbursed for outside calls, if we even go outside, but I can't imagine the use is very common and how often you actually perform CPR, especially on stairs. I mean, I don't really have enough background to know the statistics in this town, but $15,000 for a device that is manually done by first responders on a very regular basis for those that do it, seems like a tremendous amount of money. And I'm, I, you know, I just don't have the statistics to speak intelligently, but it just strikes me as a high number for the number of times it's used, and Denny, or any of the squad, I'd love to hear about this.
Dennis, you want to speak to it?
Well, if it was going to save my life, I'd be worth $15,000. As of right now, we cannot, you know, 90% of the houses in this town can perform compressions correctly, coming downstairs, traveling across the yards, on the stretcher, and into the hospital. It's almost impossible to do correctly. This is a machine that goes on the board and it is just like you're supposed to, beating away.
Thank you.
Based on that question, Finance Committee, want to say anything about the size of the appropriation? appropriation?
We do bill for the calls, we have donations, and some of those donations of our, the squad is going to go towards this. It's all part of the billing process.
Anyone else want to speak, Bartlett? If not, I'll ask you to vote, this is $15,000 from free cash for the purchase of a chest compression system, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries the affirmative. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, et cetera, $4,000 for the purchase of pagers for the rescue squad. Mr. Bartlett?
I move to transfer the sum of $4,000 from free cash for the purchase of pages for the rescue squad, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Made and seconded, $4,000 from free cash for this purpose. Dennis, do you want to speak to it?
Quarter of the pages that we have right now are out of date, they don't work, we can't get pass for them. Without the pages, the members have no idea if there's a call or not. It's just so people will be aware that there is a call, so they can respond.
Finance Committee has a positive comment, do you want to say anything further? Anyone else want to speak on the motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote, the motion is to transfer $4,000 from free cash for the purchase of pagers for the rescue squad, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries the affirmative. Article 20, this one is $3,000 for replacement windows and related expenses at the Legion Hall. Val Bradley?
I move to transfer the sum of $3,000 from free cash for replacement windows and related expenses at the Legion Hall, 15 Lincoln Road, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion made and seconded for $3,000 for free cash for this purpose to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. Val, do you want to speak to this?
Well, the Legion had asked us to, they need to replace the windows because they eat in the winter and the heat is going out, it's an old building, and the highway said they would help with the, replace the windows, so they had gotten a bid in about $3,000.
Finance Committee has a positive recommendation, anything further? Anyone else wish to speak on this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote, it's to transfer $3,000 from free cash for replacement windows and related expenses at the Legion Hall to be expended by the Board of Selectmen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, et cetera, $3,000 for electrical work for repairs to the emergency generator at the 1870 Town Hall. Article 21. Ms. Bowman?
I move to transfer the sum of $3,000 from free cash for electrical work for repairs of the emergency generated, like, generator located in, located at the 1870 Town Hall, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion is made and seconded to transfer $3,000 from free cash for electrical work for repairs of the emergency generator at the 1870 Town Hall to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. We have a negative comment from the Finance Committee, is there anything further you wish to say? Scott?
Yeah, the Finance Committee does not recommend, based on a 4-0 vote, don't see the actual need for this purpose.
Anyone from the Selectmen want to comment further?
There is a generator currently located at the old Town Hall, but when the Town Hall was renovated, it was disconnected, and this money would reconnect it and fix it up to run it.
Anyone else wish to speak on this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote, all those in favor say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss a hint? Apologies. Bruce Ricard?
Bruce Ricard, 124 Pleasant Street. As was mentioned by the Selectmen, there is already a generator there. It wasn't serviced until they did the renovations and they changed over the electrical system, it was disconnected at that time. It has sat there, a potential, just not being realized. The building, as far as the use, the worth of it, if, right now we have an extended electrical outage, which does occasionally happen, I think we know, that building would not have any heat, and if you have a burst pipe in the building, I would suggest it would cost far more than $3,000 to do the repairs to the building subsequently. In addition, if you are holding an event there, it would provide immediate electrical backup and lighting so that people could exit the building safely. It could also be used in the sense to, as an alternative source for housing people in emergencies when we are without heat and electricity. It's cheap money to bring it back online.
Anyone else wish to speak on it? If not, I'll ask you to vote, the motion is to transfer $3,000 from free cash for repairs to the emergency generator at the 1870 Town Hall to be expended by the Board of Selectmen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Article 22, this is for $2,500 for paint and related supplies for the town office and public safety building. Motion under Article 22, Ms. Bowman?
I move to transfer the sum of $2,500 from free cash for paint and related supplies for the town offices and public safety building, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Want to speak to that?
The $2,500 will be used to paint the municipal, inside the municipal buildings, and we use, we get free labor by using the Worcester County Sheriff's Department, the inmates come and paint for us, and all we have to do is supply the paint, the paintbrushes, and give them lunch, so it's a bargain.
Finance Committee has a positive recommendation, is there any further comment? Anyone else want to speak on this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote, this is $2,500 for paint and related supplies at the town office and public safety building to be expended by the Selectmen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries the affirmative. Article 23, $6,000 for sprinkler system renovations in the same building.
I move to transfer the sum of $6,000 from free cash for sprinkler system renovations and related expenses in the town office and public safety building, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion is made and seconded to transfer $6,000 from free cash for this purpose to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. Judy?
Chief Ricard might want to come up and discuss this.
Fire Chief Bruce Ricard?
The building, although not that old, part of the system is a dry system because there's no heat in the area of where the sprinklers are located. You have to maintain the sprinkler system by law. We've had, if you remember earlier in the seven o'clock meeting, that we did a transfer for repairs, this is the second time in this year, I believe, that we've done repairs to the dry system. What happens when the air gets compressed, moisture is squeezed out of it, it's going to condense from the higher section of that dry system to the lower section. As luck would have it, when you build any public building, it's low bidder, so they didn't use the inappropriate pipe, but they certainly used the least expensive pipe they could use. As a consequence, the water collecting in that syst, in that dry, excuse me, in that pipe, is rotting out from the inside out, you get perforations, and the first hint I get from my office is I can hear the air compressor, which keeps the makeup air in place so that the system doesn't charge and fill water into that dry system, that's running constantly. And the second hint is that someone in the public safety building will let me know that there's a loud hiss coming from somewhere. Having discussed this, both Selectmen Bowman and I have discussed it with the sprinkler company, it's a lot less expensive to do this incrementally and replace it with pipes that are of a better quality than it is to do this, call them in for an emergency each time, we have to replace a section, and another section, and another section. It's a lot more cost effective to do it this way. There are three qualities of pipe we could use, the cheapest, which has lasted us 12 years, galvanized, which is what we're now using when we do the replacement, or we could use a pipe that would last 100 years, but we'd be talking far greater amounts of money to replace it, so this is the most cost effective way to replace the system.
The Finance Committee has a positive recommendation, is there anything else you want to say on this motion? Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote, the motion is to transfer $6,000 from free cash for sprinkler system renovations and related expenses in the town office and public safety building, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries the affirmative. Article 24 is $14,000 for repair and refurbishment of police cruiser. Thomas Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $14,000 from free cash for the repair and refurbishment of the 2007 Ford Crown Victoria marked police vehicle number three, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion made and seconded for $14,000 from free cash for this purpose to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. Thomas?
This is, is part of our normal capital plan, either replacement or refurbishment of the existing police cars. This year, the capital planning committee looked at the availability of refurbishment of the existing vehicles, and they were convinced that this is a good way to go with the Crown Victoria being discontinued, sort of cottage industry has developed to refurbish and restore these, and it seemed to them, and we agreed to be a more cost effective approach than purchasing a new vehicle.
Finance Committee has a positive recommendation, do you wish to speak to it? Anyone else wish to speak to this motion?
What he said.
Police Chief's comment. Anyone else? Okay, in that case, I'm going to ask you to vote, the motion is for $14,000 from free cash for repair and refurbishment of the 2007 Ford Crown Victoria marked police vehicle number three, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 25, $40,000 for boiler for this building. Nicole McCune of the school committee?
I move to transfer the sum of $40,000 from free cash for the purpose of replacing the boiler at Berlin Memorial School, said some to be expended by the Berlin School Committee.
Motion made and seconded, $40,000 from free cash for this purpose to be expended by the school committee.
Berlin Memorial School has two boilers, one of the boilers has been leaking for several years, the boiler block, which is composed of 15 sections, needs to be replaced, and several sections of the boiler have rotted out and is leaking water on the floor. The intention is to replace the entire block and to avoid emergency repairs.
The Finance Committee has a positive comment, do you wish to speak further to it? Scott?
Yes, this was originally thought it was going to be just a repair at around $16,000, later found out it'd be a replacement at $40,000. So, part of the agreement, we worked with the schools, is passing over some of their additional articles to save funds for this fiscal year, so we can apply it to this.
Anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote, this is $40,000 to replace a boiler at the Berlin Memorial School to be expended by the school committee, from free cash, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 26, $3,000 for purchase and installation of a sound buffer system in the cafeteria.
Ruth Plannin, school committee, Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 26.
Motion made and seconded to pass over Article 26, do you want to comment on that? Say why, Ruth?
Scott basically told you we were managing funds and felt that the boiler was of more financial importance than this article.
Finance, okay. Anything to be said further on this? The motion is to pass over Article 26, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Pass over, the article is passed over unanimously. Article 27. All I have to do is find the right page. Okay. This one's for $3,200 for performing a roof survey and inspection to identify problems with the Berlin Memorial School roof. Chris?
Chris Keefe, school committee, I move to transfer the sum of $3,200 from cash. I move to transfer the sum of $3,200 from free cash for the purpose of performing a roof survey and inspection to identify problems with the Berlin Memorial School's roof, and to propose solutions to resolve the issues with the roof, said some to be expended by the Berlin School Committee.
Motion is for $3,200 from free cash for this purpose, and to be expended by the Berlin School Committee. Chris, you want to speak to it further?
Yes. The roof is 14 years old. We have had two roofers in to examine the roof, they have indicated a number of issu- They have indicated a number of issues. Some of the pitched roofing is deteriorating, especially in the back, and wearing out too soon. Some shingles do not come over the drip edge, and there appears to be premature aging of the roofing materials. Roof leaked in the last rainstorm that we had over a week ago, and they are now in the preschool, grade one, and the kindergarten classrooms. So this would be a study to find out exactly what is wrong with the roof and then be able to go out and look for someone who would repair it.
I'll ask the Finance Committee to give their current comment on this article. Scott?
Originally, this was one of four articles to be passed over, as I mentioned before, because of the extra cost of the boiler replacement. But based on additional information we have received, we've changed our vote. Instead of being what you see written here, "not recommended by the Finance Committee", is now "recommended by the Finance Committee", 3-0.
Is there anything else to be said on this motion? Yes.
Just a financial question. How much free cash do we have?
You've got to speak a little louder so everybody can hear.
I just want to know how much free cash we had and now how much we have left.
Our free cash number started at $611,385. And based on what was spent already, including the special town meeting at seven o'clock, we've spent $475,200 of the $611,385. Based on the articles that are still on the warrant, there should be still sufficient funds.
Anything else to be said on this motion? Okay. The motion is to transfer $3,200 from free cash for the purpose of performing a roof survey and inspection to identify problems with the Berlin Memorial School's roof and to propose solutions to resolve the issues of the roof, said some to be expended by the Berlin School Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carries the affirmative. Article 28, $15,000 for purchasing replacement computers.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Articles 28 and 29.
Motion to pass over Articles 28 and 29. Ruth, do you want to say something about?
For the reasons previously given.
Anyone else want to speak on the motion to pass over? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries the affirmative. Article 30, $39,000 for portable radios for the fire department. Fire Chief Bruce Ricard.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $39,000 from free cash for the purchase of replacement portable radios for the fire department use, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion made and seconded to transfer $39,000 from free cash for this purpose to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. Bruce?
Like the pages earlier on and the police cruiser, this is part of the capital plan. We have avoided sizable costs over the years. I have to thank personally Fire Engineer Rick Plumber for his work on the communication system here for the public safety departments. With careful planning, federal grants, and incrementally spending money here, we're not hit with a huge sum of money, which some towns you'll see this year are having to consider hundreds of thousands of dollars to bring their radio communications into compliance with new federal FCC requirements, which go into effect 2013, January of next year. The radios we're looking at are breached the end of their life in terms, some of them. Others are worn and will replace parts of those radios. In some cases, we will have them inspected, and if possible, we'll just simply recase them in new weather, new cases with new seals, so we don't have to replace the entire radio. So we're hoping to go through all of our portables, upgrade those that need to be upgraded to handle some of the newer frequencies that we have to put into the systems. And also, just so you know, we are fortunate enough, we're geographically located, that we have four different frequencies that we have to operate off of. 800 due to Marlboro and some of the state channels, some of the state emergency channels. UHF, which we operate on right now. VHF, which is for some mutual aid, Hudson, Clinton, and also some of our partners in mid-state. And we also have kept in place low band as a backup means in case these other systems go down, since the other radio systems require, they're a lot more complicated than the low band is as far as the infrastructure support that they need.
The Finance Committee has a positive recommendation. Do you wish to, excuse me? Has a positive recommendation, do you wish to speak further?
No.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this motion? Okay, I'm going to ask you to vote. This is for $39,000 from free cash for the purchase of replacement portable radios for the fire department's use, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries the affirmative. Okay. Article 31, $6,000 for town, for defibrillators. Dennis Fierabey of the Rescue Squad.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $6,000 from free cash for the replacement or repair of town-owned defibrillators, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion made and seconded. This is $6,000 from free cash to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. Dennis?
As you saw tonight, we had a little incident, and you noticed how quickly the rescue squad jumped on the problem. But if I was to yell out, "Call 911 and go get the defib right now," how many people in the building know where it is in this building?
Out in this hallway.
That's pretty sad. It's out in the hallway. The town has 14 defibrillators. Some of them are, well, I've caught a few of them are reaching their average lifespan of about eight to 10 years. And last year, because we had multiple models, different departments had different brands, we weren't able to train on the same training equipment. We pulled out what is an expensive program and put it into the capital plan, and we had a mission to pick a single model that would serve both the public and the professionals. It's the same unit on the ambulance as it is now out in the hallway out here, and over the next 10 years, we're going to phase it so that each year, a part of the program will be upgraded and money will be spent on it. They had to be programmable. One of the things that's happening out there is the Heart Association and the Red Cross and everyone else involved in trying to bring up the survival rate is changing the protocols. And to be able to change the defibrillators to match what they're coming up with is something that was taken into consideration as well. We have 14, I believe. The five that are left that we want to replace are at the 10-year. There's a couple that, we have a year or two left. If you approve it tonight, we'll have 10 of them. We lucked out last year, if you read the rescue report, the police chief was able to change an order that he had that was kind of messed up by his vendor, and we changed it to the brand that we selected. And we had one that was still owed to us along with a CO2 detector, and Denny was able to change that. So we approved three, but we were able to get seven. So out of the 14, we have seven new ones that everyone in this room could operate very easily. The future, people are asking for one at the library, they're asking for one at the Old Town Hall. We need to sit down the police chief, the fire chief, and Denny and myself and consider some of the alternatives. So that will be coming down the line, but not right now. We're just trying to replace the equipment that we currently have. Thank you.
Finance Committee has a positive comment. Do you want to say anything else? Anyone else want to speak to this question? Hearing no one. I will ask you to vote. The motion is for $6,000 from free cash for replacement or repair of town-owned defibrillators, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 32. $5,336 for Regional Household Hazardous Products Collection Program. Paul McKelk of the Board of Health.
Paul McKelk, 119 Carter Street. I move to transfer the sum of $5,336 from free cash to enable the town of Berlin to join the regional hazardous, regional household hazardous products collection program at the Devens Recycling Center, said some to be expended by the Board of Health.
$5,336,000, excuse, $5,336 from free cash for this purpose to be expended by the Board of Health. Paul, you can speak to it.
Sure. What this $5,000 and change does is it is basically an initiation fee where we will belong indefinitely to a facility that will handle our household wastes multiple times a month for nine months of the year. Typically, in the past, what we've had to do was contract with a hazardous waste hauler. They have very convoluted contracts. The last time we got hit with a $4,000 charge because of dotted i's and crossed t's. We have to, when we do it ourselves, we do it in the open air at our own transfer station. There's a liability. We have to have people there collecting money and monitoring, and the vendor, based on estimates, which we can only guess, has the right to shut down when a certain volume has been reached, which could leave a number of residents and their vehicles waiting in line. This program at Devens would allow residents to bring their own material at their own, at their own schedule. The disposal site there is, it's something new, was started in this past year. It has a roof facility. It's protected. You do pay a fee, just as you would if we did it at our own transfer station. Their facility is DEP and fire chief inspected. They have fire suppression systems. I mean, they're set up for handling hazardous waste. When we do it here, it's kind of like we're doing it in the back 40 with our fingers crossed, and it's only once every so many years. It's very difficult to gauge how frequently we should, and if we chose to say once every three years, we could be ending up paying money for hazardous material that never even came in. Any questions?
The Finance Committee has a negative recommendation. Do you have any further comment on that? Scott?
As much as we have a negative recommendation, it was actually our push to have the Board of Health bring this, bring itself as a separate article. It seems like almost ever since I've been on the Finance Committee, when we've met with the Board of Health, they've been talking about doing a hazardous waste program. And it's, but that's always been talked about within their overall operating budget. So in this particular case, I think it's good to have this article out there to see how the town wants to discuss this and move forward with it. Really, what our negative recommendation really comes down to is concerns we have over all the fact that this will not be in town, anybody that wants to use it has to travel to Devens. But we really want this out there for you to make the decision about how much you will utilize this as a town for this cost.
To be, one other, one other point to be totally transparent is $5,336, as I said, is a one-time fee. That one-time fee is paid by the member towns that join the Devens facility and goes to increasing their capacity and increasing what they can handle at their site. On an annual basis, the town of Berlin would be paying $1,837 for the right to use it. That's an operating cost. So we're talking about a capitalization cost at the $5,300, and then there's an annual operating cost, which allows the town to participate, excuse me.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Skip?
Skip Dugan, 59 Ball Hill Road, Berlin Conservation Commission. We just did a day cleanup last week, and I applaud the Board of Health for being concerned about the hazardous material we have in town. But based on the experience I've had over the last 14 years picking up paint cans and oil cans and whatever off the road, they're going to drive to Devens. The people that drop this stuff and dump this stuff, leave it in front of the transfer station gate when the transfer station's closed and Pete has to live with it. We pick it up all over town. The folks that dispose of this stuff in an inappropriate manner aren't going to drive to Devens, and I believe that we need to find another way that doesn't cost us $5,700, guessing that it's going to be successful, and then commit to another $1,800 a year when we don't know. I think we ought to find an adjacent town that will work with us in a cooperative manner, like Hudson or Northborough, where we can have a common pickup that is closer, and try that for a year and see if they'll even drive to Northborough or Hudson before we go somewhere as far away as Devens, because I don't believe it'll be feasible. I applaud you. I think we need to do something about this hazardous waste, but Devens isn't the answer.
The Board would welcome any information about joining up with other towns that you or anyone else may have. People who are curbside dumpers are always going to be curbside dumpers. They won't use our, our facility any more than they would use a Devens facility. I think that's a fact of life.
There are others that wish to speak? Yes? Gretchen?
Gretchen started again on Randall Road. Just a quick story. When my parents recently passed away, my dad was a pack rat, and when we cleaned out his shops, I was faced with a bottle of mercury that was about this deep and a bag of DDT and... this deep, and a bag of DDT, and assorted other things that I had no idea what to do with. I was fortunate to talk some local cleanup people into helping us out. And as we unloaded the car, both in Fort Myers and in Hingham, the people at the transfer station were amazed at the poisons and the chemicals that I had. If I hadn't done the work to find a place for that stuff to go, it would've been so much easier to dump it in the rivers and the ponds in the backyard. So, I applaud any efforts that are being made to come up with a solution to this problem.
Anyone else want to speak? Bruce Rikaid?
Both Bruce Rikaid, 124 Pleasant Street, and also his fire chief. I'm not sure whether the town wants to take this route or not, but I also applaud the idea that we want to do something in a regularized fashion. The idea that people might just simply drop it off and leave Pete to deal with it is not the answer, because Pete can't deal with it, because hazardous waste are hazardous waste. Since we don't have a regularized ability now to get rid of our hazardous materials, anyone care to venture how we're getting rid of them right now? Some people are smirking. So, we're either all curbside dumping, or we're just holding on to it in our house, or we're getting rid of it some alternative means, or we know somebody else that's credible that we can turn it over to. But you have to be a licensed facility or a licensed contractor to handle some of these materials. This woman's story is not far-fetched. I'm sure we all have something kicking around the house that we would like to get rid of. This may not be ideal. I don't want to drive all the way to Devon's and pay a fee to get rid of something. But in lieu of the Board of Health having a regularized annual pickup day, which has inherent costs, which I assume they've looked into, and maybe that's not cost-effective, this, I think, is the next best bet.
I also should add that this program isn't just for residents. It's for the school system. It's for any of the town organizations, boards, highway department to use. So, it's not just limited to residents.
Richard Sardell?
There's an ongoing annual cost that's not in the budget, so I don't know how you're gonna pay for it. How are you gonna pay for it this year? Since this is the indoctrination money. Also not revealed in the discussion is that it's a $40 drop-off cost. When you do get to Devon's, I'm not sure if that's per load or per item. Perhaps you could enlighten us. The towns that belong to this organization, all but Devon's at this point. Berlin would be the most remote from the information that was made available to me. We think this is a problem. It should be addressed, but this solution doesn't appear to be the solution that would work for the town. I just honestly can't see that people are gonna drive to Devon's to pay $40 or $50 to drop off a can of paint. It ain't gonna happen.
Well, the $40 is a misnomer. It can be $40, but it is a $10 minimum. And I would imagine most people would collect a variety of hazardous waste before making the trip. I know I certainly would. And it's just something we're putting out on the floor for people.
Peter?
Okay. As for the operating cost, when we were... Moved this to the article, it was kinda right near the... Where the warrant was closing for these. And there probably was a little bit of a mistake where we should've had the operating cost included in with this $5,000 fee. It actually is in their operating budget. If you actually look at their operating budget, it would've been level on their expenses. It went up exactly what the annual fee would be. So, the funds are there. If this was approved, they would have it for the annual fee also at this time. But again, they would only use that if this was actually approved.
Peter Hoffman, Randall Road. Question? How many dollars are spent currently over the last five years for hazardous waste removal? In contrast to about $15,000 is what I estimate you will spend.
No, you've gotta... You've gotta talk so everybody can hear what you're saying.
So, apologies. Anyway, I estimate it'll cost about $15,000, $2,000 a year, plus the $5,000 initiation. So, that's about $15,000 over five years. And apparently, it costs nothing currently because we're not... We're not...
We're not...
We're not doing anything. So, I guess it's a big commitment. It's a big commitment, is my impression. And I wonder if there's a way that... There can be an arrangement whereby DPW, Transfer, Board of Health can move the hazardous waste from the transfer station to Devon's on a periodic basis, thereby we all place our hazardous waste there in some lawful and safe fashion, and then it gets moved even by a commercial partner. And then we'll use this more practically, it would seem. Thank you.
Paul? I believe the last hazardous waste day we had was six years, possibly seven years ago. I'm sorry, I lost...
So, the $15,000 versus zero?
Okay.
We could move it from the transfer station commercially, market there, and for...
Well, we really don't have a secure facility at the transfer station to house the material. That's one of the problems with any small town. You have a hazardous waste collection day where people queue up, and the firm, the collection firm is there, and you queue up in your vehicle, and one by one, you get rid of what you have until they reach a full capacity.
What are our neighbor towns doing?
No.
What?
You're not talking from the back of the room. Sorry.
At any rate, this is a discussion that's long overdue. The Board appreciates the comments, and if this gets approved tonight or not, we would welcome additional input, any new ideas. We thought that this was worth putting out for public notice, and we thank you.
Okay. This is $5,336 from free cash for the Regional Household Hazardous Products Collection Program that the Devon's Recycling set up. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
I don't think we found the answer yet. Article thirty-three, we already disposed of. Article thirty-four involves a transaction that I personally have been involved in. Though I currently have no further interest in the issue, I think it advisable that I step down as moderator for this article because of my past involvement. And I call on the town clerk to preside over election of a temporary moderator.
Okay, could I accept nominations for moderator? I nominate Tim Wheeler. Okay, I have a name and a second. Are there any other nominations? Okay. All those in favor of Tim Wheeler being the temporary moderator? Say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Oh.
(laughing).
Article thirty-four, "To see if the town will vote to approve the Board of Selectmen to authorize the Conservation Commission to file on behalf of the town of Berlin, any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the land program, and/or any other grant program, or any other applications for funds in any way connected to the acquisition of approximately fifty-seven acres of land known as the Agar property." And the rest of the text I'll forego with now, 'cause you can see it in your warrant. Do we have a motion on Article thirty-four? Very... There we go. Skip Duggan from the Conservation Commission.
I suppose we read this out?
Yes, please.
Have I just read?
Well, I only read part of it.
Yes, I get to read it all. I'll read quickly. "See if the town will vote to approve the Board of Selectmen to authorize the Conservation Commission to file on behalf of the town of Berlin, any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the land grant program in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 132A, Section 11, and/or any other grant program, or any other applications for funds in any way connected to the acquisition of approximately fifty-seven acres of land known as the Agar property located on Ball Hill Road on the Northborough Line to be held in... Excuse me, by the Northborough Line, to be held and managed by the Conservation Commission, which was previously authorized to raise, borrow, and/or appropriate $417,290 for the purchase of said land for conservation purposes. Further, that the Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Commission be authorized, as they deem appropriate, to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments, including the conveyance of a perpetual conservation restriction in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 184, that they believe to be in the best interest of the town of Berlin to effect said purchase. Said conservation restriction may be granted to any organization qualified and willing to hold such a restriction or take any action relative thereto."
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can the Finance Committee comment in regard to their vote?
Finance Committee has a recommendation, four zero. Has a recommendation?
In a lot of ways, this vote is a little bit of a formality. Let me explain the chronology. First of all, we owe Mr. Agar a great amount of thanks. The land appraised well over $900,000, and he entered an agreement with Conservation Commission to sell this beautiful sixty acres of pristine property for $417,000. It abuts the Pisgah area across the road. It abuts Rack Meadow behind it. Vastness and wildlife habitat is what's important. This creates one of the most beautiful wildlife habitats we have. There are trails in that area. I've seen moose there, coyotes, bobcats, fisher cats, eagles, hawks. They're all there. It's a beautiful piece of habitat. Barry sold it to us for $417,000. And first, we owe a big thanks to Barry. He could've sold it to her twice then.[1445.15][1445.15](applause). Barry was very generous. And the second thing we did, since we finished our open space plan last year, the town of Berlin was eligible to apply for state grants, and we were eligible to apply through the year 2018. We applied for and received a grant from the state for 56% of the purchase amount, and it was one of the largest grants that was awarded in the state because of the quality of the property and the fact that we got our open space plan done on time. So, the grant's $232,400. Subtract that from the payment here, and we paid Sudbury Valley Trustees to assist us in creating the grant, and they're also gonna be the folks that will hold the conservation restriction. And they're excellent, and they've done that before in-town. The net to the town will be less than $3,000 in acre for buildable land. That is a tremendous asset to the town. This worrying is required, and it's required for us to vote on this tonight so that we can get the $232,400 from the state, because if we voted last year, we were already obligated to buy the land. Sudbury Valley Trustees has already bought it from Mr. Agar. We buy it from Sudbury Valley Trustees on May 21st. So, we'd sure appreciate your support. If you don't, we're liable to buy the property and can't get the state grant. So, by doing this, we're eligible for $232,400. Thank you.
Thank you, Skip. Any other questions or comments? No other questions or comments? All right, then we'll move to a vote on Article thirty-four. I'm not gonna read it again. As you understand it, it's to authorize the Board of Selectmen... It's to approve the Board of Selectmen to authorize the Conservation Commission to file on behalf of the town for these types of grants. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, unanimous. And as moderator, I wanna suggest that we take two minutes to allow the Planning Board to set up for a number of articles that we're gonna be discussing. Is that all right to the...
Let's take a five-minute recess.
Thank you. Thanks.
Article thirty-five is a new town general bylaw which would delete the present Article twelve, earth removal, and replace it with a new earth removal bylaw called Article twelve, Earth Removal and Import. You will find that this goes on for a page or two, and it's lengthy, but it also addresses many things. Is there a motion under Article thirty-five?
Tim Wheeler from the Planning Board. I move that the town vote to amend the town and Berlin general bylaws by deleting the current Article twelve in its entirety and placing it with a new Article twelve, Earth Removal and Import, as printed in Article thirty-five of the May 7th Town of Berlin Annual Town Meeting Warrant, with the following changes. These are minor, but you'll note these on Section 3B1. Delete the words "a farm, garden, or nursery," and add the words "farming as defined in Massachusetts General Law" as Chapter 128, Section 1A, or "agricultural composting as defined in 330 CMR 25 and 310 CMR 16." So, that's just, again, Section 3B1. Delete the words "a farm, garden, or nursery," and essentially replace it with those definitions that the state uses for agriculture.
Motion is made and seconded to amend the Town of Berlin general bylaws by deleting the current Article twelve in its entirety, replacing it with a new Article twelve, Earth Removal and Import, as printed in Article thirty-five of this warrant. In Section 3B1, delete the words "a farm, garden, or nursery," and add the words "farming as defined in Massachusetts General Law" as Chapter 128, Section 1A, or "agricultural composting as defined in 330 CMR 25 and 310 CMR 16." "agricultural composting as defined in 330 CMR 25.00 and 310 CMR 16.00." Mr. Wheeler.
To begin, I want to divulge the fact that as a part-owner of Indian Head Farm, Indian Head Farm has a licensed composting site in the Town of Berlin as licensed under the chapter that we cited there and that language in the motion. The Planning Board normally isn't involved with general bylaws. This is a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw, so generally, the Planning Board doesn't get involved with articles such as this. But as we watched some of the conversation that took place in the town over the course of the last six months, eight months, it seemed evident to us that it would be appropriate to look at our Town Earth Removal Bylaw that we've had in effect for a number of years and ask if there were some modifications that we could make to it that would help deal with the import as well as the export of material into town. Years ago, the town had an Earth Removal Board, and more recently, because of the minimal amount of Earth Removal that takes place in town, there are only two licensed Earth Removal operations in town currently. So currently, the Selectmen serve as the Earth Removal Board. And the bylaw that we're proposing, essentially, although we're saying we'll delete the entirety of the existing bylaw, we're basically reinstating the entire bylaw with a few modifications. The primary modification being that it now has authority over the import of material as well as the export. Years ago, when Berlin first wrote its Earth Removal Bylaw, we copied Northborough's, and when the Planning Board began to look into this, Emerson Chandler suggested that we revisit Northborough's and see what they might have done with their language since we modeled ours after theirs in the first place. And in looking at theirs, essentially, Northborough had taken their old one, similar to ours, and added "import," and we said, "Well, this is rather simple. It's direct. We believe it offers the town the coverage that it's looking for as a first phase. There may be opportunities," and I think because the next-- well, several articles that you're going to look at tonight, like-kind soils and the citizen petition, all those help inform the type of decision I think we need to make on this bylaw. So our objective was to put into place a bylaw that was simple, that had been tested, passed through the Attorney General's office, and would be dealing with not only the removal but the import of soil. If you look at the bylaw, the only other really changes that are of significant note are that we put a limit of 100 cubic yards of soil, loam, sand, gravel, stone, or other material. Presently, there isn't a limit. There isn't a threshold that then trips the scale and you have to come in and get a permit. So this, in essence, jumps it up to 100 cubic yards. If we go to section B, there's a fee schedule that's put into effect. Currently, a renewal is $100. This would jump a new permit fee to $500 and a renewal to $250. And we've added language that deals with the construction of apartments, and if they're in a situation where there's two apartment units or developments of more than one apartment building or a single parcel lot, that trips the scale and there has to be a permit taken out. Residential units, the construction of residential units on single-family lots are still exempt. There's still the requirement for a public hearing, although in the case now, the language is there to notify abutters. In the old language, there was no requirement to notify abutters, and we think that's an important but simple addition. And then there's a clause that deals with violations and fines that are to be imposed if there are offenses, which wasn't as clearly specified in the bylaw that we have on the books today. So in a nutshell, that's what we're proposing. Essentially, an opportunity for the town to have authority over the import as well as the export of those types of materials into town. Thank you.
All those who wish to comment on this? I don't see any hands. If not, we'll proceed to a vote. The motion is to amend the Town of Berlin general bylaws by deleting the current Article twelve in its entirety and replacing it with a new Article twelve, Earth Removal and Import, as printed in Article thirty-five of the May seventh Town of Berlin Annual Town Meeting Warrant, with the following changes. In section three B one, delete the words "a farm," "garden," or "nursery"-- that comes at the end of that paragraph-- and add the words "farming as defined in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 128, Section 1A," or "agricultural composting as defined in 330 CMR 25.00 and 310 CMR 16.00." All those in favor, say aye?
Aye!
All those opposed, no?
No!
Motion passes in the affirmative. And Article thirty-six, which is on the next page, but I don't know if I can read it right now. Ninety-two, page ninety-two. "To see if the town will amend the Town of Berlin general bylaws by adding the following as a new Article nineteen, like-kind soil." And then we have Article nineteen, like-kind soil. Mr. Wheeler.
Tim Wheeler from the Planning Board, thank you. I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Berlin general bylaws by adding a new Article nineteen, like-kind soil, as printed in Article thirty-six of the May seventh Town of Berlin Annual Town Meeting Warrant, with the following changes. And these, again, are minor, but the first change is in section C one, delete the word "minor," huh? And replace it with the words "accessory," "subordinate," and "incidental." Those are words that are used in the section just above in a sentence or two, and they're more appropriate than "minor" in this particular instance. And add an "s" to the word "standard," so it becomes "standards." The second change in section C one B, delete the word "dump" and replace it with the word "import" and capitalize the words "like-kind soil." And then in section M, in the last sentence, change regarding to regrading. And that's it. Thank you.
Motion is made and seconded to amend the Town of Berlin general bylaws by adding a new Article nineteen, like-kind soil, as printed in Article thirty-six of the May seventh Town of Berlin Annual Town Meeting Warrant, with the following changes. In section C one, delete the word "minor," M-I-N-O-R, and replace it with the words "accessory," "subordinate," and "incidental," and add an "s" to the word "standard." In two, in section C one B, delete the word "dump" and replace it with the word "import" and capitalize the words "like-kind soil." Three, in section M, in the last sentence, change regarding to regrading. So we're changing the "a" and the "r," and that has a rather different meaning. Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you. Again, this isn't normally the Planning Board's role, but where we were working on the modifications to the Earth Removal Bylaw, it seemed appropriate to venture forth into this area as well. I want to thank, right up front, Chris Senney from Riverbridge, who, because he was close to a site in Northborough that led him into a perplexing situation regarding contaminated media and contaminated debris, felt that there might be some way to construct an ordinance that the town might utilize. And so he gave us the initial draft that we worked with. We shared this with Copeland and Page, who have worked with us on a lot of zoning, the big, big zoning articles in the past, and they gave us some advice as well. I think it's important to understand first that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has a regulation entitled "Contaminated Media and Contaminated Debris." And in this language, in this regulation, there's a section that says, "Soils containing oil or waste oil at concentrations less than a release notification threshold specified in 310 CMR 40.3," and that are not otherwise a hazardous waste, and soils that contain one or more hazardous materials at concentrations less than a release notification threshold and that are not a hazardous waste, may be transported from a disposal site without notice to, or approval from, the department, the DEP Department, under the provisions of this contingency plan, provided that such soils are not disposed or reused at locations where existing concentrations of oil and/or hazardous material at the receiving site are significantly lower than the levels of those oil and/or hazardous materials present in the soil being disposed or reused. So the state has an ordinance. They say, "We're concerned about soils that are contaminated media and contaminated debris. Below certain thresholds, we're not as concerned." So those can travel about the state unencumbered to a degree. That's where the town comes in, particularly towns like ours that have no public water supply. So you're faced with a situation where you've got private wells and people are concerned about what might be brought into the community that's considered by the state contaminated, but contaminated below a certain threshold. So with Chris's help, we took the language that you see in Article thirty-six, and I think the important points are that in section C, "The importation of like-kind soil may be done only if it is accessory, subordinate, and incidental to the ongoing use of the property of proposed development." And in essence, that's the driving force behind the text that we've tried to put together for you to consider tonight. The Board felt, and as we went through conversations with other folks in town, it seemed appropriate to find a way to give the town some authority over these materials that the state felt they didn't need to worry about. This is new ground. If you Google "like-kind soils," you'll only come up with "Berlin like-kind soils." So no one else is dealing with this in the Commonwealth, as far as we know. And Copeland and Page have said to us, "You need to be prepared for the fact that when this goes to the Attorney General, they may very well say, 'The Commonwealth is already dealing with these soils butt out. Keep your hands off the issue.'" So we're prepared to deal with that, and I think that, you know, it'll be interesting as a test case to see where the Commonwealth stands on this issue. But I think our argument is going to be that it's a situation in a town without public water where the town ought to have some opportunity for oversight. If you go through the sections, there has to be an existing conditions plan prepared. The documents have to be prepared by a licensed site professional. There has to be a list of the proposed generating sites. They have to give us information about the quantity of material that will be moved in. There has to be documentation of the like-kind soil to be imported to the receiving site. There has to be a transportation plan. The Selectmen, who would be the governing body in this case, may impose condition deemed at ensuring against undue water runoff, destabilization, contamination, or harm to any resource under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission or to private property and/or damage to water supplies and wells, which, again, is the critical concern for a town like Berlin. I think, if the moderator would allow it, Mr. Senney is prepared to make a few comments, and I think that might be helpful for the body.
Mr. Senney is an attorney who has participated in this and is a representative of the taxpayer, though not a voter in the Town of Berlin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and Mr. Wheeler. Good evening, everyone. My name is Christopher Senney. I don't live in town and I'm not a voter. I live in Westboro, and I'm here tonight with my brother Matthew. We bought the Reese family property and are currently working to redevelop that property as a project known as River Bridge. We have two brooks and a river on our property. North Brook comes down from the north. Barefoot Brook comes over from Northborough, and they both join on our property with the Assabet River. And we've put eighty-six acres of land, which we purchased from the Reese family, into a conservation restriction, and we're trying very hard to protect those resources. We're only allowed to build on the central part of our property. And in the last year, there have been two projects where like-kind soils have been brought in to a farm, one in Northborough and one in Berlin, and the real purpose seemed to me to find a place to put a lot of soil. And so I began to research this, and my brother Matt and I have built four public water supply wells right next to North Brook with the permission of the Conservation Commission and the DEP, and we're very concerned that if there were to be some contamination in either of those brooks, it might affect our public water supply, which is no different than other neighborhoods in town that might have that concern. And so what I learned is that the DEP regulation that Tim referred to is really the DEP saying, "We don't want to take a look at this." But it doesn't prohibit a town from adopting its own bylaw that says if someone's going to bring contaminated soil-- again, it's contamination below a reportable level, but it's still a combination of minerals and other particles that you don't want to have too concentrated in any one location. And so from the DEP's point of view, it's okay if we take it from Fan Pier in Boston and we bring it to another location, as long as a licensed site professional says the soil in the receiving site is made up of the same material. It has the same levels of the same contaminants. Well, that's something that I think a town can regulate. You can require a permit so that you get that report from the licensed site professional, who will prove to the Board of Selectmen that the soils here on a given property have the same contaminants and that the contaminants coming in are not of a greater concentration of those contaminants. I think it's perfectly legal for the Town of Berlin to say, "We want to know how many trucks, over what period of time, what mitigation will we impose to make sure that the trucks are not damaging our roadways or private property?" So I believe it would be legal for a town to adopt a bylaw that said, "Okay, we're not saying no to like-kind soils, but if they're going to come into the Town of Berlin, we would like to regulate them." And I think there's an importance to a town like Northborough or Berlin. You have a lot of farms, and farms happen to have naturally higher concentrations of some of these minerals and other contaminants. It's not a problem, but it's just there after decades and decades of farming. And all-- And also, there's an exemption from zoning. To a large extent, the zoning bylaws can't regulate farming. And those two things come together, and people can take advantage of the lack of regulation and the lack of control, and can bring very large quantities of contaminated fill into a property. I've seen some proposals where, in the name of just raising a farmhouse 20 or 30 feet to continue the same farming activity, someone wants to bring in a very, very large quantity of like-kind soils. So I wrote this. I wrote to the Board of Selectmen and said, "I am not an expert in this, but I offer it to you." I did some research and I wrote a bylaw. The Planning Board took a look at it. Kay Doyle, who is one of your town attorney, Copeland and Page, modified it quite a bit. And again, it's not my expertise, but I do think, in my legal opinion, it would be perfectly fine for a town to continue and pick up on what the DEP has established, and to regulate it in terms of what contaminated soils will come into the town of Berlin and how it gets used. So I appreciate the opportunity to address the town meeting, and again, it's not my area of expertise, but I believe an ordinance like this, Tim is right, there isn't any other ordinance like this in the state, but I wrote it because I was very concerned about Northbrook and Barefoot Brook and the resources we have here in town. So if you adopt it, then we'll see how it does with the Attorney General, but I urge you to take a close look at it. Thank you.
Are there others that wish to speak on this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. We're creating a new general bylaw, Article 19, "Like-Kind Soil." There are three changes to the way that it's printed in your booklet. In Section C1, delete the word "minor" and replace it with the words "accessory, subordinate, and incidental," and add an "S" to the word "standard." In Number 2, in Section C1B, delete the word "dump" and replace it with the word "import" and capitalize the words "like-kind soil." Number 3, in Section M, in the last sentence, change "regarding" to "regrading." All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries an affirmative. Article 37. This is to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning district map of Berlin by removing the following parcels from the Residential and Agricultural District and adding them to the Agricultural Recreation Conservation District. There is a list of those, and I will not read that, but rather refer to the maker of the motion to take care of that part of it. Tim, are you doing this one?
Tim Wheeler, Planning Board. I move that the town vote to amend the town of Berlin zoning district map by removing the parcels of land listed in Article 37 of the May 7 Town of Berlin Annual Town Meeting warrant from the Residential and Agricultural District and adding them to the Agricultural Recreation Conservation District with the following changes. And you'll note that there are six different owners of property that are listed, and we're proposing to delete any parcels belonging to DJ Colwell Trust, the Ronald D. Wheeler Revocable Trust, or Sawyer Hill LLC from the motion.
Okay, the motion is to amend the zoning district map by removing these parcels of land from Residential and Agricultural and adding them to Agriculture Recreation Conservation District, but to delete from this list any parcels belonging to DJ Colwell Trust, the Ronald D. Wheeler Revocable Trust, or Sawyer Hill LLC from the motion. Okay, Tim?
The Agriculture Recreation Conservation District ARC is, Tom is gonna... Sleeping. Tom is sleeping.
I'm sleeping.
We won't show you a map. I'll describe to you in your mind. So, if you picture Berlin and you picture Peachill Road and you cross over into Bolton, the Shartner Farm in Bolton has an APR, an Agricultural Preservation Restriction on it. Two pieces of property, maybe 10 acres in total, come over into Berlin, but they have an APR on them, and we're proposing to place them into this ARC zone. The parcel that we spoke of earlier this evening, that formerly belonged to Mr. Agar and now belongs to the town of Berlin, is, if you, again, picture Berlin and you think about the southwest corner, there's a 50-plus acre parcel that borders Northborough and Boylston by Rack Meadow off of Ball Hill, the last property on Ball Hill in Berlin. And that parcel is one that we're proposing to move into ARC. And the other pieces are complex parcels that straddle both sides of River Road that Mr. Senney spoke of a moment ago, that River Bridge controls, and that 80-plus acres has been put under a conservation restriction. The community gardens are located on those now. As you come into town, you'll see the activity there, but essentially, it's these three parcels. Now, we've eliminated three: Colwell, Sawyer Hill LLC, and Ronald Wheeler. Ronald Wheeler is behind Pure Hockey. Sawyer Hill LLC, of course, is behind Mosaic and Camelot up on the former Howard Watkins property. And that one comes out. Ronald Sawyer, oh, and Colwell. So, the reason that we're eliminating those is that, when we really started looking at the language again, and we looked at the CRs that exist for these properties, there either is a right to use the property at some point in the future, or currently, they're using them for what might be termed a utility, which would be water supply or septic systems. And I suspect what you'll find is the Planning Board will come back in a year and make a proposal to put in language into the ARC zone that says that when there's an underlying use that's allowed through the covenant from the CR or the APR program or whatever, that we'd allow those to be exempt from the ARC zoning, they'd still be allowed to be practiced. But because we don't have that language in place, we're not going to propose those three parcels tonight. So it's the River Bridge property, the Agar property, and the Shartner property. One that's in control of the town, one that has a conservation restriction on it, and one that's under an APR. And that's all I have to say.
Anyone else want to speak on the motion under Article 37? I don't see any hands. So I'm going to ask you to vote. This will amend the zoning district map by removing these parcels that have just been mentioned from the Residential and Agricultural District and adding them to the Agricultural Recreation Conservation District. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, no. Motion passive by unanimous vote. And, at this time, we are five minutes past 11:00, so we have to decide whether to continue our business and try to complete it this evening, or to adjourn to a later date. Those in favor of continuing our business this evening, please say aye.
Aye!
Those who want to come back some other night, please say aye. Okay, I've taken care of that bylaw. 38. Article 38 is an amendment for the zoning bylaw to Village Overlay District, which involves a possible car wash. Is there a motion under Article 38?
Kathy Greve, 164 River-
All right, you've got to point the microphone down so that you can speak into it.
Kathy Greve?
A little closer.
Kathy Greve, 164 River Road West. I move that the town meeting pass over this article.
We have a motion to pass over this article. You want to speak to it, or?
Chris Senney is available, please.
Sure. Mr. Senney?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Kathy. When we filed this warrant article with the Board of Selectmen, we thought we might want to introduce the possibility of a car wash near the River Bridge convenience store gas station, but that was many weeks ago. We have not developed a plan. We don't know that we ever will, and so we'd like to ask that that article be passed over.
Anyone want to speak to the motion to pass over? Hearing no one. All in favor of passing over the article, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, no. Motion is unanimous to, the vote is unanimous to pass over Article 38. Article 39. This one is in the Village Overlay District also. This is about allowing a drive-up window to service a retail coffee service at the convenience store. Kathy?
Kathy Greve, 164 River Road West. I move that this article be adopted as written in the warrant.
We have a motion that this article be adopted as written in the warrant. May I have a second? Mr. Senney?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, my name is Christopher Senney. I'm one of the partners at River Bridge.
Point that back up again, the microphone.
Sorry. You may be familiar with the River Bridge Shell Gas Station and Convenience Store. We are very pleased that we reached the one-year anniversary of opening our first facility at River Bridge. Our tenant is Noria Energy Corporation of Worcester. They signed a sublease with Dunkin' Donuts. I don't know if any of you have had the chance to go in and patronize Dunkin' Donuts, but what we would like you to think about tonight is the idea of allowing a change to the Village Overlay zoning district that would allow one, only one, drive-up window, and only associated with the sole convenience store operation at River Bridge. We don't have the PowerPoint, but I do have a couple of drawings I'd like to show you, just to give you an idea. This is Mike Dryden of Waterman Design, who did this wonderful artwork. Thank you. So this is our convenience store gas station, and you can see the existing rotary in South Berlin. And what we would like to do is to change the configuration, eliminate two existing parking spaces here, but add six new parking spaces nearby, and put in a drive-up window that would go around the convenience store, and the service window would be located right here. We show two lanes instead of one, because fire departments and police departments usually prefer to have some lane from which someone who needs to get out of line can maneuver. I'll just show you a couple of other pictures so you can get a flavor of it. Go ahead. This is the existing convenience store gas station and the pumps. You can see that the two lanes that would come in and start to go around the building, and you can see that there would be a menu board, like you see at other Dunkin' Donuts, and then you would proceed around the convenience store. Go ahead. Here's a view from the other side. You can see the two lanes coming around the store. You can see the Dunkin' Donuts window, and you can see how it fits in with the overall site. And here's a view from other part of the River Bridge land from across the street, and you can see, we're going to have to build a retaining wall, just because the land does slope down there, but you can see how it fits in. And the last view just shows it at a little bit more street level, so you get a sense of, now, there's a shady car there and a car over on that side. So it's something that we think would make the traffic flow at the convenience store more efficient. Those customers who are there only for the Dunkin' Donuts, or the coffee, or the donuts could stay in their car and go around so that they're not parking and coming in. And we're adding a total of four new parking spaces, which I think will make it flow much better. So the warrant article itself reads, "The above notwithstanding," that's some language that would have not allowed a drive-up window. "The sole convenience store allowed within the Village Overlay District, not anywhere else in town, only in this Village Overlay District, may have one drive-up window to service one retail coffee service enterprise, subject to site plan approval by the Planning Board." Now, we've shown you some plans, but those have not been, they've been reviewed with the Planning Board, but not approved yet. And if you vote this change in the bylaw, that would then give us the opportunity to apply for site plan approval from the Planning Board, and they would require us to do a full traffic study and to look at all of the different planning aspects that go into such a facility. But what we're looking for tonight is a vote that would allow us to undertake that process and to introduce the drive-up window. Thank you.
Because this is a zoning bylaw amendment, we are required to hear about a Planning Board hearing on the subject? Ron Vagruska?
The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on Tuesday, April 10, 2012, to consider Article 39 on a warrant for the town meeting to be held on May 7, 2012. At the Planning Board meeting held on Tuesday, April 10, 2012, the Planning Board voted zero in favor and four opposed to Article 39.
We enter that into the record for the possible abuse of the Attorney General?
At the public hearing, the proponent presented the reasons for a drive-up window, including increased business, improved traffic flow on the site, and relieving parking spaces for customers that needed to enter the store to purchase other items. Many years ago, the citizens of Berlin passed a bylaw prohibiting restaurants with drive-up windows. We see nothing unique with this site, to ignore this prohibition. The reasons given to a drive-up window at this site could easily apply to any other site. In fact, one citizen at the public hearing expressed a concern that passing this article could establish a precedent. The Planning Board finds setting a precedent would make it hard to argue against allowing other donut shops or other fast-food restaurants with drive-up windows.
Are there others that wish to speak? Matthew Senney. Again, Matthew is a taxpayer, but not a voter.
Good evening. I'm Chris's partner at River Bridge, and we appreciate all the effort that the community has shown in making River Bridge what we hope it will become. In putting the request through for the drive-through, we talked to a lot of people. We realized we have a big success. Noria's been very successful. But we do have a traffic flow problem. Safety has been brought up to us. Parking is an issue, and soccer moms and elderly is another issue. This is a unique overlay zone issue. If you give us the opportunity, we will make a better area to circulate the people, in the morning particularly. Moms have talked to us, elderly people have talked to us. The traffic flows, putting the cars in queue, will keep a circular flow to the property and make River Bridge better, and the town of Berlin, and our own- and make River Bridge better and the town of Berlin and our overall program down there stronger. And the safety issues and opening up a Pandora's Box to other opportunities for drive-throughs. It's about room and safety and our overlay district. The town will have the opportunity to look at other proposals in the future, but they will also have reasons particularly to say no if they don't warrant the valued reasons that I've stated today to give River Bridge this one exception. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Hearing no one, I will ask you to vote. The vote is to adopt this article as written in the warrant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Ah, the chair being in doubt. No, the chair not being in doubt because this is a two-thirds vote, and that was not a two-thirds vote. All right, don't take long. Mr. Wheeler has something to tell us about from earlier.
To keep us legal, in regard to Article 37, the Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on Tuesday, April 10, 2012, to consider Article 37 on the warrant of the town meeting to be held on May 7. At the Planning Board meeting held on Tuesday, April 10, 2012, the Planning Board voted four in favor, zero opposed to Article 37. I apologize for misleading the moderator before.
Without it, the Attorney General says no. Article 40, see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by striking their from Article 12 earth removal and putting in a new article, earth movement. Is there a motion under Article 40?
Tammy Santolo, 32, Ball Hill Road. I make a motion to pass over this.
We have a motion to pass over Article 40. Do you want to say anything about why?
It's duplicative.
Well, you need to say it to the microphone.
Article 40 is duplicative to Article 35.
Is there anything else? Anyone else want to say anything about the motion to pass over? Timothy?
The Planning Board supports the motion to pass over, but we want to acknowledge the work that the citizens that put this petition together put into this effort. And I think what we said at the public hearing was that their effort will inform some modifications they will make to the earth removal bylaw in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a motion to pass over Article 40. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 41, which is, the next one.
I move to appropriate the sum of $100,000 from the stabilization account to be used toward the reduction of the 2012-2013 tax rate.
Motion to appropriate $100,000 from the stabilization account to be used toward reduction of the 2012-2013 tax rate. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this motion? This, of course, was from the Finance Committee, so it's recommended by the Finance Committee. Anyone else want to speak on it? All those in favor, $100,000 from the stabilization account to be used toward the reduction of the 2012-2013 tax rate, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. And Article 42.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 42.
Motion made and seconded to pass over 42. Anyone want to speak about it? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. And Article 43 is the election article. Val Bradley.
Mr. Moderator, I move to adjourn this meeting to Monday, May 14, 2012, at 12:00 noon at the Berlin Town Offices Lower Level, 23 Linden Street, at which time and place the polls will be open for the election of town offices under Article 43, and that following the announcement of the results of the election, this meeting will be dissolved.
Motion is made and seconded. Before I ask you to vote, those of you that could help us pick up chairs afterwards and so on would be greatly appreciated. And I also want to thank all the people in town government and the citizens of the town for all the things that have been done in preparation for all the things we've done The motion is to adjourn this meeting to Monday, May 14, 2012, at 12:00 noon at the Berlin Town Offices Lower Level, 23 Linden Street, at which time and place the polls will be open for the election of town offices under Article 43, and that following the announcement of the results of the election, this meeting will be dissolved. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously.